We'll call the Caroline County Board of Supervisors meeting for August twelfth to order. If you would please stand for the invocation. Most gracious and heavenly Father, once again we come before you asking for your blessings over our region this evening. Asking for your divine intervention helping us to do the work of the county. Ensuring that the good services that are beneficial to our citizens are met. We give all thanks and all praise to you in your name we pray. Amen. Please join me. Praise the ladies. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm sorry we're just a little late getting started. We had a prior meeting with the school board. So it took us a little over, so we had to take a little break in between, so we do apologize for trying to be expedient and efficient this evening. Present this evening is Mr. Clay Forehand from the Madison District. Mr. Black from Western Caroline. Mr. Jeff Sealy from Bowling Green. Miss Nancy Long from Fort Royal. Mr. Floyd Thomas from Madison, I mean, excuse me, Madison County. I'm really underrepresented. Forehand, you have any open comments? Thank you, Mr. Forehand. Mr. Black. Thank you. Mr. Feely?
I have two, Mr. Chairman. One, this Saturday is Bowling Green Harvest Festival. Hopefully the rain will hold off for late in the afternoon. So that is the highlight, I think, for Bowling Green this year. And then I want to say I attended the state fair. What a fabulous turnout. I don't. I couldn't believe the number of people that were coming in early in the morning, Mr. Underwood. I'm sure those that live at Benin, the county, saw and I. It was absolutely tremendous. And my understanding is that it wasn't even record attendance, so. But it was a fabulous time and the weather was absolutely perfect.
Thank you, Mr. Sealy. Mrs. Long?
Yes.
Thank you, Miss Long. Mr. Thomas? And to Mr. Chairman, if you will indulge, I have a couple. One is the United Way program. Has the rental assistance thing, and it's run by what was Planning District sixteen. And I got a complaint from a citizen that they weren't necessarily supporting Caroline County residents. I don't know if Mr. Black or Mrs. Long from GWRC can investigate, but if United Ways. Oh, it's Mr. Sealy. If United Ways is doing a program for the five localities that surround us, it seems like Caroline should get part of that. If you'd like, Mr. Sealy, I'll be happy to provide the citizen's name and number who knows that. They applied for some rental assistance and rental assistance was given to Spottavania and Frecky Fur, but not to Caroline. So we need to figure out why we're not included in that group. And for citizens, I think I let Chief Office and Sheriff Lippa know that there is construction in Brookwood. They have a sewer issue that they had to close the road for, so any emergency vehicles that normally take that route to get out to three oh one won't be able to get out there for a while, so. We try to make them aware so they could reroute. And that's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I just had two short comments. Of course, I did attend the state fair where we had one minor issue with. A little electrical issue that gave us indication we had low water pressure, but that was very quickly resolved. The fair, as Mr. Sealy indicated, was awesome. It was very well attended and it was a successful event. I did get a couple complaints from a couple of my neighbors regarding the fair. But I will hope that people would look at the very positives that the fair brings to the county, the notoriety, the fact that this year, I think, all of the advertisements that I heard or saw indicated it was in Caroline County, which is a plus. I happened to play golf one day over at Tunnel Tits and I looked at the seventy or eighty houses continuing to go up. People have discovered Caroline County, so I think we're going to have a lot of new neighbors here shortly. Finally, I was negligent in mentioning that September fifteenth through October fifteenth was Hispanic characters month. Certainly want to just mention that, acknowledge those are Hispanic population and recognize them for their contributions to the great state of Virginia, as well as the Commonwealth of Virginia, I should say, as well as the United States of America. And that's my other comment. Thank you. Excuse me, amendments to the agenda. Mr. Forehand? Okay. Recreation, okay. What about your broadband? Over broadband, okay. Thank you. Mr. Black, any amendments to the agenda? Thank you, Mr. Black. Mr. Sealy?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
No amendments. Thank you, Mr. Sealy. Mrs. Long? Mrs. Long, none. Mr. Thomas?
None, and I have none. I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as amended with the removal of the Recreation Committee appointee from Madison and with the removal of the Broadband Advisory Committee person for Madison and Western Caroline at this time.
So move, Mr. Chairman? I get second. The motion, appropriate second. Can we accept agenda as amended? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any names? The agenda carries. Thank you, Mr. Black. First on our agenda tonight, a presentation by Mr. Kyle Bates from Virginia Department of Transportation. Mr. Bates?
All right. Make sure I got the clicker here. Just like this. I think they're working to get hooked up. But Chairman. Chair, thank you all for having me. I appreciate you having me here tonight. We're going to go through the BDOT quarterly update. The presentation on extreme here. I'll be going through some of the projects, whether they're closer towards destruction and some of the ones that are a little further out. Most of them, at least, I'm holding off. So go ahead and get started.
All right, just take it off. Thank you.
That's right.
You guys get it back up.
And clicker. Doesn't appear to be working, but if we could just slide through as we go, we'll go ahead to the first slide. Well, I'll tell you what, in light of time, I'm just going to continue on. Okay, so the first project here is the Chalverburg project, which is the Route six thirty-nine and six thirty-eight, so that's Ladysmith Road at Parlow Road. This is a project to realign the intersection. Right now, they will. If you were to continue around the curve, you would have the free flow condition. I'm sorry, I think we went one slide too far potentially. There we go. All right, if you were to continue around that curve, you would behave north. Shows on that graphic, but the stop condition will be changed with that project to allow that free flow movement to travel straight. Whereas Parlow Road will have that stop condition to turn left or right. Now, that is a project that has been advertised. Construction is slated to start in spring of twenty twenty-two. Construction completed as early as twenty twenty-three. Next slide. Next one here is a big one. A lot, a lot to this graphic, but the purpose of this one, this is a smart scale project. This is the Ladysmith Road widening. We will widen to a four lane divided with turn lanes. This is a project that will be, has been advertised. We're waiting on bids to come back. Construction is started, is projected to start in spring of twenty twenty-two. Construction should be complete by summer of twenty twenty-four. We do have a lot of developments in that area as well, so we are continuously working with the the developers in that area to ensure that things are lining up appropriately with their entrances and our improvements. So there will be a lot of construction ongoing at the same time, but we've done a great job with developers and kudos to them for coming together with us to try and come to some solutions so that we're not doing work quite citywide, whether that's the developer or the state. Working together to try and make this all move seamlessly. Again, that is one that will begin in twenty twenty-two, assuming bids come back. Next slide. Here we have the Route three oh one Chase Street. This was a recent smart scale award. No work has begun on this one, nor will it anytime soon. But this was one that was awarded eleven point eight million for funding. You know, Mr. Sealy, I know you had expressed some concerns in the last board meeting. I'm sure those concerns are still standing. So we're continuing to, I did find out we can't use either of the options from the three oh one study, which is some good news, but I know there are still some details that we're going to work through and I'll continue to partner with you to track down forward to that. Next slide. Here we have the Route thirty bridge rehab. This is actually a Richmond District project, but because it is right there on the line, I bring it forward pretty often. This is ongoing. Construction started in May of twenty twenty. We did, Richmond District did pick up the work zone for the state fair so that all lanes could mobilize through that area. We actually, in the Fredericksburg residency, do the traffic control for the fair in conjunction with the state police and sheriff's department, all the other partners there at the state fair. I agree, I think I went down there, I guess it was Friday, and everything seemed to be moving beautifully, so. Now, I know there were some busier days out there, but everything, everybody seemed to be smiles as far as I could tell, so. Now, this is one, they are back out there starting August tenth, so they should be back out to mobilize. Again, this is one that should be completed in spring of twenty twenty, and this is just a super structural repair on the existing westbound.
Mr. Bates? Is there a bit you said August tenth?
I'm sorry, I COVIDed. All right, next level. This is the two oh seven westbound bridge over the Madison I. This project was recently completed. I think I've heard good so far. We did have to pick up the work zone. We had traffic crossing over to the eastbound side, but everything is open and flowing now. So that one is complete. Next level. This is the Route seventy, seven forty-three bridge replacement over the South River. Construction started in late twenty twenty. The new bridge is open. We still have a few loose ends we're working to tie up, which should be completed in the next thirty days, but the bridge is open to traffic. Excellent. This is the I ninety-five rest area truck parking expansion, where we will add twenty-nine additional truck parking spots and change some of the traffic flow. You see there, they can kind of go around the outside of that graphic, pull in and then exit to the, we'll call it the southern side for these purposes of this graphic. The lower side, and then continue on to ninety-five south. So that is at the mile marker one oh eight. That had started. You see them out there moving earth. And that is scheduled to be completed in spring of twenty twenty-two. Here we have the Route one over South River. This is one, we still have a little while, but I want to make sure that this one stays in prime view all. This is a bridge rehabilitation. Require some lane shifts, but we will continue to move traffic. Obviously, this is Route one corridor statewide significance, but we're going to continue to move traffic throughout the project. So no detour, anything needed for Route one, obviously. That is planned for spring of twenty twenty-two and construction completion is tentatively early in twenty twenty-three. We're currently working to finalize that schedule now. And again, we will maintain lanes throughout the duration of the project. Next level. Here we have six fifty-two over Polcat Creek Water Drive. We are currently in right-of-way acquisition for this project. It will require a detour for construction. We will have to close it for approximately a year, which will push traffic down and to the two oh seven area and back around the water. We will put out plenty of press releases from that time comes when we close any bridge as always in coordination with the first responders, school transportation, everybody, and we let them all know well in advance. So that is coming. That is, construction is slated to start late twenty twenty-two and complete late twenty twenty-three, so approximately a year. Next level. Here we have the six thirty-eight over South River. This is the bridge replacement, a full replacement. This project will require road closure as well. This one is pretty far off. We're looking at fall of twenty twenty-five, the end of fall of twenty twenty-six, so we're still in scoping. We have not gone through and found out what the detour is quite yet, you know, for analysis, make sure that trucks and vehicles that traverse that road now can traverse the detour. So we are still working through those detours. Next slide. Caroline Village, we did complete the rail addition process. All of those roads are complete. But we are going to be returning next year for some surface treatments, just an additional layer on top of the already built surface treatment to add. It's just another layer of structure to Caroline Village. So while that is surface treated now, we try and make sure that we hit it in a couple different lists to make sure that we keep that structure continuously built. Next product. Here we have Mr. Black, the Bridlewood site. Since BDOT crews are going to be out there this month and through the site, this is looking right specifically. We were able to get access to that property, so we will be out there this month to correct that. I know that there were some conversations about that in the last board meeting, I believe, related to the new developments, but we will, state forces will be out there to improve that site. Okay, next slide. This is the Route seventeen pipe replacements. This was an emergency replacement, as you all know, where we are down to one lane on seventeen through Caroline County. That work is now completed for the most part. We have finished the retaining wall, which you see here, and the soil nails to hold everything together. We have finished the pipe underneath, which is a very deep pipe. We had to jack and bore underneath seventeen very far down, and that is now complete. Everything is done from a floating standpoint and stability standpoint. Gar grill is up. The only thing left that we have to do is to resurface, remove the signal and open it back up to two-way traffic, which I am told is being slated next week. If I can't get the contractor out there in time to resurface it, we will go ahead and open it and come back at it. I think it's more important to open the road to traffic and we will come back to resurface everything as structurally sound, so we are in a good place. All right. Next slide. This is the resurfacing schedule for twenty twenty-one, which I have put in front of you all before. We are wrapping up a lot of these. If you noted down here, we have a hundred and thirty lane miles in Caroline County, so a good number, and that number has been continued to go up next year. I expect to have even more as it relates to secondaries. I sat here about a year ago and told you that the department is shifting their focus to the high-volume secondary routes. We are continuously doing that, so as I, as I have the twenty twenty-two routes, I will put them in front of you. I hope to do that at the next, next board meeting that I come. That will have a whole lot of lane miles in Caroline County that I'll be able to present to you. Excellent.
Before you go, Mr. Bates?
Yes, sir. Most of this is already, already done. It's already completed, yes, sir. Okay, we have, this is for the, this paving season, which started in the spring and then here in the fall before the temperatures get too cold, so a lot of these routes are already completed. If there's any specifics, I can, just let me know.
I can go along with that.
Okay. I will be coming with you all for the twenty twenty-two routes. That is, you know, funding intended. You know, our resurfacing budget does shift on a year-to-year basis depending on the budget. So we, you know, we put those out the contract. Once we get those bids back, we typically push those resurfacing schedules out, but we do have routes that are prioritized for years to come, so. And it depends on what the treatment is as well, so. All right. Next slide. Mr. Feely, I know this is one that came up here recently. This is Route two oh seven, the shoulders to Bowling Green. As you can see, they are approaching on the shoulder, more importantly, on the bike lane. Within the next month here, we are, this month, I should say, we are going to be able to get out there, turn those shoulders back to make sure that we have full width shoulders for those biceps that are traversing that area of two oh seven. We are also going to restripe that area, and it will be the entire road, not just the bike. That entire road is, it was just on that schedule to be done this winter, so we are going to get that done as well. Next slide. We are finishing up here on our, our last mowing cycle here. I, I said this in the other counties, but it was very nice. I have a committee issue just residency-wide as far as political signs in the right-of-way or really any signs. People have been doing a great job, so I thank everybody. That's, that's really, because it's, we have to go out and pick up trash prior to mowing or else they get caught up in our, our bush hall, so thank you to everybody for that. So we are finishing up our last mow. They are moving down. They're in Spottavania right now. They should be finishing up in the next couple of weeks, and then they'll be coming to finish up Caroline as well. So that is. Next slide. And that is it. The only other thing I had, Mr. Thomas, we had talked last time about the restriction on sunshine. I sent that to you today. We are ordering those signs in the next thirty or forty days. They will be up. I got your email. Thank you. Yes, sir. I'll be doing good work as usual. Thank you. That is all I've got. I can take any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Mr. Forehand? You're Michael?
Is it any better? It's a lot better.
I had the misfortune of sitting at the light at Ladysmith and Route one for quite a long time. When we could actually see the light, it stayed green for a total of six seconds for the people on Ladysmith Road to turn off, either go straight across or either left. Whereas the traffic, the ninety-five detour, Route one traffic going back to ninety-five was three, four, five minutes. It was extensive.
Is that?
How does that, is that someone sitting there? Jeff Black sitting there, you know, making him want to.
So, Mr. Black called me. Let's rewind. He called me, I guess it was a couple of months ago on a Saturday, but we had ninety-five southbound shut down. So when that happens, we, we have an emergency signal plan, which gives most, and I say most, the six seconds is not surprising. We are forcing a lot of traffic through a small funnel being routed. All that ninety-five southbound traffic is now coming through Caroline County, Spottavania County, which I believe that that accident was just below the one eighteen, if I remember correctly. Yep, and so all of that traffic was detoured off onto Route one. People naturally use any of the back roads that they know. Some of them probably came through here in Bowling Green, anything and everything to get around. So what we are trying to do is funnel as many of that traffic, regional traffic and nationwide traffic down Route one through our two-lane each-way section of Route one. So we do have an emergency plan in that situation, and most of the green time goes to the northbound and southbound, specifically southbound in this case of Route one. So the side roads unfortunately suffer absolutely. We have those backups that are, we're closing Route one. There's very little we can do about it from a traffic management standpoint. The alternative would be to back up ninety-five. Back up ninety-five, it's going to back up everything else anyways.
So we just get, you know, thirty-three percent more on like eight seconds of green light? And it was starting to back up Ladysmith Road almost to ninety-five as well.
Right. I mean, it's a delicate balance. I will take a look at the emergency plan. It's been a few years since I myself have taken a look at it. There's really no good way to do it, to be fair. Couple more seconds. I'm not sure we'll do a lot, but I will take a look at it, Mr. Forehand, and talk to our signals guys more important or timing guys. I'm smarter than meeting comes to signal timing. I'll see if they can give me some pointers.
Is that done remotely?
Yes, absolutely. I like to say it's just a button. It's not that easy, but.
I didn't figure any way I was standing there, but.
Right, no, it's, it's something that we can do remotely on Route one. I can't do that for all the cities remotely, but for Route one, we can implement that remotely. Change the time.
The next quick question. The Jefferson Day assignment that we'll be removing in the near future.
Yes, sir.
Does BDOT care where they go?
I've gotten this question a lot. I, I will follow up. Usually what happens in these instances is, and this is not just for signs, so I'll speak kind of generically, but if a contractor removes asphalt from the road, it's asphalt then belongs to them. So I need to check the contract. There may be, maybe that that scrap metal now belongs to the contractor. They're trying to make money. They're probably going to sell it. So I, I will follow up. You were not the first person to ask me that. What I will say is that we are only getting in the business of, and really, I don't think that this is happening statewide. I think this is just something that I'm doing frankly. But we are going to be putting up the ones for you all that are on the BDOT mast arms, the larger signs. The reason we're doing that is because I can do it for a lot cheaper than you all can do it. And as you all know, the bill states, and it's not a BDOT thing, so we're a little out of my lane here, but the bill states that it does fall on the local. And so I'm going to let my contractor do it, so I'm working through that process now with county staff to get an agreement together so we can get the funds from you all to do the, we'll call them the BDOT signs, but the ones that are on BDOT.
The two big intersections, the Ladysmith Road and two oh seven.
Right, there's a very small amount. There are some other ones throughout, but it's a very small amount. You all have the least of any of my accounts, for sure. The least expensive too, which is good, but for the other signs, which frankly, the ones that I'm going to be replacing, the other one. So if you, but for the other ones, I believe the county is going to be replacing those.
Yes.
So that may be a conversation in-house that I'm assuming. Well, I won't assume.
If we can recoup some money by off, I'll recycle them. Making sure there was, another one, anything in the provision of law that's turned in for.
I will double-check our contract and I will let you know. Usually what happens, the way that the contract bids on these things, the contractor then owns that. If they're that material and they do what they want, that's included in their price to perform the work. And that's, that's at least how it is for most of our contracts. Not sure about this one. It's not one that I have in residency. It is a BDOT contract, so I'll check on that.
Thank you, Mr. Forehand. Mr. Black?
Same thing. Better? Is that better?
Little bit.
Now, now? Oh, yeah, never. Just a few things. I appreciate the Bridlewood. I'm still getting the complaints about people getting, being very concerned about that intersection, Mr. Bates, and we're, we're definitely looking at something tonight that might, might help out a little bit with that, by moving the intersection, at least adding an intersection. My concern, however, though, is, is that if you're at Bridlewood, the people of Bridlewood right now are. I know we went out in the summer, sometime in June, we looked, we talked about the right-hand turn, you know, or looking to the right. So the traffic coming from the Lake Land or west area. But there's still a lot of people that are concerned about the traffic that's actually heading the opposite direction when you're, so you're at the Bridlewood intersection and Ladysmith Road, and you're going to turn left to go towards Route one. That vegetation, I, I don't know. I don't know if it's in, I would imagine it's not in BDOT right-of-way. But there is concerns and people I've had from multiple sources that they feel as concerned, if not more concerned, about making that left-hand turn because they can't see that traffic. I mean, right now, I know you say we have the sight distance. But when. If people travel at speed limit. If people are traveling at speed limit, yes. And, and so that is. I don't have the numbers on the, we have the numbers on the accidents. I don't have all the reasons why, you know, the accidents happen at the intersections, obviously, from people not seeing people pulling out on to, from Bridlewood on to Ladysmith Road. I don't have the numbers on the, we have the numbers on the accidents. I don't have all the reasons why, you know, the accidents happen at that intersection. It's obviously from people not seeing people pulling out onto, um, from Bridlewood onto Ladies Smith Road. But if there's anything that we can do to, uh, contact the homeowners to cut that, I mean, it, it's going to get better, obviously, once we start losing the foliage here for the next few weeks. But it's an ongoing issue that'll come back up. You know, once we get, you know, April and May, it'll, it'll come back to us again. And, uh, eventually if we do get the intersection improvements, that'll alleviate some of the issues. But right now, I mean, that's probably, even if that passes tonight, that's years away.
Right.
Uh, so anything that you can do besides cutting down, turning both sides, I appreciate, you know, looking, when you're looking to the west. But at the same time, anything that you can do on that, on that end would be greatly appreciated. Yeah, from a VDOT perspective, uh, what would work best is, um, because it is a state road, a state road. Uh, I mean, we do maintain the site distance. While it does meet it on paper, uh, understanding that people do sometimes travel, uh, who the passers. Um, what's a, we can try and get a right of entry on that side as well. That is not, we have not been working on that, but it'd be, I may be able to do that rather quickly if the homeowners are unviewable. So I may work with, um, county staff and see if we can, um, get some kind of right. I, I would much rather fix it and never have to go back. Remove the trees even, um, so that they don't grow back. Now, homeowners sometimes get a little skeptical of that because it is, um, shielding them from a visibility standpoint, at least from Ladies Smith Road. But, uh, I think that it's important that we try. So, uh, absolutely, I can do that. Yeah, because every, like literally every time when we do these track pickups, almost every single time where you're, you're going to get accident debris, I mean, almost guaranteed at that intersection. And it's, we're lucky. We haven't had a fatality yet really. I mean, at that intersection, it's, it's pretty serious when you see some of the pieces of cars that we're picking up, um, at that intersection. So anything that you can do would be greatly appreciated. My, my next one is just minor. Uh, when you guys, uh, did a good job of, remember we had talked about the shoulders along Ladies Smith Road and they were kind of eroding a little bit. Uh, from some heavy rains last year. Between Bridlewood and Lake Land or you, um, VDOT did a good job and came out and filled some of it in, but it's, it's like, uh, there's still a huge, there's still a huge difference between our, uh, gap. And so you filled in some of the, some of the, uh, the hole and not the whole way. If you travel the road, you'll see what I'm talking about as you head from Lake Land or West. There's like, they filled in something that you still have a probably a three or four inch, you know, space there. With someone going up the road probably wouldn't be very good. So if you could just take a look at that and I, if you want me to meet you out there, there's a business that's, uh, that's right near it. There's, uh, I guess it's new now, like a psychologist office or something right there. There used to be a, a, a realty office right in there. Uh, but it's just outside of Lake Land or that ditch, that, um, hole is not quite filled in probably to what it should be.
Okay. I will take a look at that. I know that we did do that asphalt work. Like you said, I have some impression that was holding, um, if it's not, I, I'll have to take another look at it.
Okay. I, I appreciate it. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Mr. Sealy.
Let me see if my microphone's turned up or not.
Yep, you got it.
My bear?
Yes, sir.
Um, I do want to, I did in your presentation, you did talk about some other options. I'm going to have to get a number of stakeholders together.
Sure.
To even look at that. Um, I've now got compliments of the sheriff's office, the accident report between Chase and the bridge, which are numerous. So, looking at how you would actually get to the county side of Chase Street. I've had, there was an accident there probably three weeks ago. I had a couple, I got phone calls. They didn't realize that that, you know, coming across there was going to be closed. I guess they learned that the day of the accident. So it, it's a real concern in how you will actually make that turn because even coming on at the overpass is not exactly clean. So I, I would like to get together. I'm going to need, I probably need a couple of weeks' notice to get everybody together. And I've got the accident reports for all that we can all look at. Um, the fire chief, the sheriff, a couple of town council members are also very interested in it. So we'll look at it time. Fall's coming. It'll be a lot easier as things slow down actually week. But I know you said we had some time to that. There was another accident there recently and I got a couple of phone calls just to give you a heads up.
Yep. Uh, I know we did remove, uh, at Broadus, we did remove some of the trees if you were looking right and coming from three oh one, turning onto Broadus. And we cut some of those, uh, within the last few months. Should help with the site distance at that location a little bit, but I, I'll have to take a look at the recent crash data soon. Um, and maybe that's something we can discuss.
Right. And it's interesting as you're coming up Chase, coming towards Bowling Green, as you come down that incline, if you look, if you look across, you don't even see three oh one.
Yeah.
Um, it's an interesting drive if you make it when there's no leaves. And because of the elevation, the stop sign looks further away than it. If the optical illusion is really bad there, and I don't know what the answer to that is, but I think that's part of the problem. The people do come out of there and I don't think they realize three oh one's actually that close. It's probably a lot like where you've come across on, um, Mr. Thomas, you're, where you come into two oh seven, six thirty, is that six thirty nine that comes into two oh seven sort of perpendicularly? And, and, and it's an optical illusion that you don't really realize. I mean, I watched somebody drive through the intersection in the rain one night. I was horrified. I don't think they even realized. And I know you, I think, I hate to use the word rumble strips there.
Right.
Um, and, and speaking, and I'm going to, I'm going to do you, Mr. Rungood. We have had an individual, and I live here tonight, talking about rumble strips. Um, I noticed that we have them down a lot of roads down the center line. Do you get many complaints about those?
Uh, if we do, it's for noise, um, usually not the effectiveness of them because they are very effective. We look at crash data throughout the state, especially on our primaries. Uh, if we can put those anywhere on a primary route, a high volume of traffic. Um, it does, it does wonders, uh, for our, our safety data. Um, it's, it's, you know, and I will say it is at times an inconvenience, um, but it's a safety, uh, it's a safety. It does outweigh, um, some of the, the inconveniences with it.
Right. And, and I do agree, I've paid more attention since it was brought to our attention. I really have started to look and look then and, and view them and where they are. But I do, I mean, if we're six thirty nine comes out on the two oh seven, I think we have a similar problem with Chase where it comes out in the three oh one bypass there.
We can, we can take a look at that one. We can.
Yep.
Next week if, if you're available, we'll, you can take a look at everything.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. John.
Thank you, Mrs. Sealy. Mrs. Long.
Uh, yes, first, thank you very much for all the work you did on, on seventeen. And please stress my thanks to R E C getting elected there for that. If we had been having to drive around for six months, uh, it would have been terrible. So thank you very much. When did you do Portobello Bay? Did you live there?
Uh, it would have started in the sometime between the spring and the fall. I can get you the exact dates. We did meet with their community.
I knew you had met with them. I just didn't know it had been done. Sorry.
I hadn't heard anything, um, which is a good thing. Uh, we have an excellent H C O contractor. They did some subdivisions up in, uh, Spotsylvania. It, it gives added structure to a subdivision route. It's, um, a much cheaper alternative. Uh, it's frankly, it's the only way we can get some rounds resurfaced. So.
Well, that's good. The other thing, um, I want to, uh, wish you good luck for the new lane openings through Ferkersburg. They're not here on the news. They're going to be closing down. They're going to have street around.
Uh, so first I'm going to give that information back to our P R team that our P R push is working. Um, hopefully everybody heard about it. Uh, so what's happening is tonight into tomorrow, uh, for ninety five, we are doing a major traffic shift. So I will say a message that we are pushing is stay away from ninety five, especially southbound tomorrow if you can. Um, and if you cannot, understandable, please be patient with us. Um, we are starting tonight into late tomorrow morning as late as ten, eleven o'clock. So, uh, usually we're not on the interstate that late, but in order to shift the traffic over, it is a lengthy process. So what that's going to mean, if you're familiar with the Stafford to Spotsylvania area ninety five, um, we are opening the southbound Rapid Hand River Bridge. So the brand new bridge you've seen building over the last three or so years. Uh, it is going to be open in three lanes of general purpose. Ninety five traffic will be traveling across. So if you were coming from Northern Virginia, uh, for whatever reason, and you are coming south of Carolina County, uh, you will be driving on the brand new Rapid Hand River Bridge as three extra general purposes. Now, uh, and this is the big push that we're making, uh, to make sure people are aware. Uh, we are going to open the local collector lanes for Stafford, Spotsylvania. For those local collector lanes, you have to make that decision up by the Trusslow Bridge, which is north of the seventeen exit, north of the one thirty three. So if you are going to Route seventeen in Stafford or you are going to Route three in Spotsylvania, you have to make that decision north of the one thirty three of my Trusslow Bridge. If you don't make that decision correctly, you're going to the one twenty six. Um, so it's very, I mean, and, and that's, that's why we're making this big push. Uh, what that does is it separates out that vertical traffic, uh, from Route three, Route seventeen, Ferkersburg area, uh, from the rest of the traffic. So from the Carolina perspective, you're coming south of Carolina. Uh, you will get to separate all the Route three and Route seventeen traffic. Hopefully you will have ice easier brought. So yes, thank you for bringing that up. It's a good point.
You are very welcome. Now I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Since we're opening these C lanes, is that going to affect your emergency plan as far as your light signals go? And maybe, maybe Mr. Forehand can get.
Yes, and.
Seconds?
Yes, and, um, what, what it will really affect is it gives another way around. Another crossing of the river if you will, because right now you've got Route one and you've got ninety five. It's two lanes, the three lanes head in south on Route one. And it is three lanes heading south on ninety five. Now will be six lanes heading south. It will be separated. Um, so what if, for instance, we were to have, uh, incidents on the main line, um, within the, uh, general purpose lanes, we can still use those local collector lanes for an emergency purpose to send traffic down. So we wouldn't have to shut down all of ninety five if it happened within that segment. So we are working on detour plans now. Um, so that, uh, if we have an issue, we can do that. I don't know if that's going to help us far down. You know, if it happens, uh, south of the one eighteen, I think we're still in that situation. So I can't promise you it's going to help all the way down here if we have, uh, an incident, uh, God forbid, but, um, it will help, uh, traffic for the region in that area. Whereas some of that traffic, if ninety five is shut down up there frankly is, um, I said this without a do it. Um, if it's south, I will jump all, go through the posts and hit three oh one and come down the border ring. Uh, so now, uh, we have three extra lanes on ninety five. Now, now all three lanes will not be open. As of tomorrow, uh, there will only be one to two lanes, uh, where you're at, uh, for the local collector lanes, but eventually there will be.
Yeah, if we could just keep dumping trucks, taking their bucket down so they don't knock into the bridges will be a better shape.
I second.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Long. Mr. Thomas?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Bates, first of all, thank you, uh, for all the great work you've been doing so far. I'm sure that's the curse because you'll probably be gone now that I say you're doing great work, but I hope not.
Going anywhere.
All right. Thank you.
You're stuck with me.
I, I, I did get your email, uh, from Sunshine Road. I forwarded that to the people in that area so they at least know. Um, and it's thirty to forty five days before you get the sign, which I understand. Yes, sir. Okay. So I do appreciate that. And, uh, two oh seven bridge, which was basically a total removal and then a replacement. You did that most right on schedule for the eighteen month timeline. So, so I want to commend you on, on, uh, being able to keep that on schedule and thank you for allowing me to go out there and watch the guys that they, uh, you know, did the final inspection. And I was expecting a ribbon to cut across, but I guess it wasn't that big of a deal, but it was to me.
Sure it is.
The gumball jerk. So I, and I do appreciate that.
I will pass that to the crew as well.
Yeah, tell them thank you.
I'm the base. That's doing that work. Yeah, there was a lot of guy down there. And, and I travel the next week or so and your concerns about the old striping, you know, are really gone. It's, you know, it's still kind of there, but very faint. So. There's those markings. Which we will have to, uh, live with those until we resurface it next.
Next, next year?
Yes, sir.
All right. The, the, the last thing I have is we had talked with your predecessor. I think your predecessor's predecessor about a ditch maintenance schedule, something to that effect. And the reason I, I bring that up is we went to the, um, M C D ribbon cutting a few weeks ago and I don't, I don't know about the rescue board members that went, but I traveled on Dry Bridge Road to get there. That was one of the roads where we said the ditches had deteriorated so much, they were actually affecting the roadway.
Right.
And we had the governor there, our state senator, our house delegate member. Um, I'd be reluctant to say how bad the road was to them and maybe would help, but you know, the reality is that road has got really, really bad. We've got a few in the county. So is there any schedule we could get from you regarding maintenance or?
Absolutely. Uh, we have the A P loader. It's really a shoulder issue more than it is anything else. Uh, you know, there's a lot of shoulders throughout, I'll say, the state of the residency in Carolina County that, um, what happens is, uh, they build up over time and the shoulders will hold water on the edge of the road. Um, so we have an A P loader that is going around residency and rotates. We did a lot of work on Route one, Caroline County, if you ride down that. We'll see where we trim those shoulders back. Um, and we're going to be pushing that out to the secondary as well. We already have started. So for Dry Bridge, I will see where that light plays on the, uh, on the schedule and I will let you know. I can provide you with all the other as well. Okay, so we will say that. I will say it is a slow process. It's, um, goes along with the shoulders and the dishes. We, there's everything else. Um, but for that being said, uh, we do have a schedule. We go, uh, we hit a certain amount of routes, same miles per year. Uh, and I can let you know with that.
All right. I appreciate that. And the last, well, the real last thing is to say thanks again for the residents that asked for some tree trimming to, you know, help their sideline. They're trying to get out on the road. So I do appreciate that. But thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Stay here.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Uh, Mr. Bates, I just have two. I'm, I'm glad you mentioned about the shoulder erosion. Uh, on Route six fifty two of Rutha Glen Road, uh, the deep curve down by.
Yep.
Caroline vines. It is, it's horrible.
That's, that's another one.
Yeah, that's, that's, so anything you can do to help there, I would appreciate. Secondly, on Signboard Road, we have a number of tall pine trees that are leaning toward residents, houses. They were supposed to come back and cut those back, but they didn't do that. Well, it's around, sorry. Uh, Signboard Road is, uh, six fifty, no. Six fifty two also, yeah.
Now there are trees on private property that are leaning.
I think they're in the right of way. I think they're in the county right of way. They've cut, they've cut a couple, but there are some that really should be cut. They're dead and now they're leaning.
Um, what I can do is have our arborists go out and take a look. If they are in the right of way, there's, we can get onto our schedule and, and take out, uh, if there's an abundance of them. Uh, it may have to be phased in for a certain amount of time. Um, if they are on private property, there's little we can do.
Right.
But we can at least pass the homeowner to see if they can do something about it. If it's an impending danger for the road. Um, I can get a right of entry and I can take it out, uh, on state down, but I thought we're, uh, we're smarter people than me when you talk about trees that, uh, that something that looks fine. They're like, nope, that's not. So.
Okay. And I noticed that on, on some of the secondary roads, you, um, add space to the shoulders.
Yes, sir.
Are you anticipating on continuing that, uh, those projects? And if so.
In certain locations, uh, I don't believe that Carolina has any on the list for twenty twenty two. We do this based off of off-road crash data. So these are safety funds that come, uh, from the federal highway administration. We look at, it's really prioritized statewide. Um, I know that we just did a couple in Carolina County this summer. I don't believe there are any on twenty twenty two, but I will keep you all updated if there are routes on the twenty twenty three for the trench wide. I can, can let you know. What I will say is in, in, uh, some of the other locality, if it was down in Powhatan, uh, and Stafford County actually does it now, understanding that there's a price tag, I was about to say, but, um, we have worked in agreement with the locality that anytime we're going to be resurfacing a route that doesn't make the state priority list for trench wide, the locality looks at our resurfacing list for the upcoming year and decide if they want to use the local funding to widen the road. Uh, and then we come back right afterwards and we service it and it's seamless. You don't even see the joints. Um, now that does require funding. And it's seamless. You don't even see the joints. Um, now that does require funding that has to come from that side. Your prioritize is based off of C, but if the locality wants to prioritize something, do that again. I understand that there is a price tag to that. Um, it's something we could look at through the secondary six-year plan in the outer years, um, next time we prioritize, but that will take away some of the other priorities that we have. So, uh, but that is an option. Um, there are none, like I said, Mr. Underwood, for twenty twenty-two, but I will keep you updated.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. And again, certainly appreciate all you do for the county and, um, certainly look forward to, continue services from Vina.
For sure.
Thank you, sir. Yes, Mr. Forehand.
I can hear you. It's not really.
Like hitting that for that.
Did you just hit that?
Um, the Route one in there, in, in latest that you're, you're getting. Standing right away, correct?
For the project? Yeah, there are some right away implications for the Route sixty-nine.
Do you know if there's enough acquisition for a sidewalk or?
We are connecting to the sidewalk at C B F as part of the project.
It's all part of that.
Correct.
I just, if it wasn't, I would just encourage it to take a look for a piece more.
There is one piece. I got to make sure I can connect to the C B S. My team's reaching out to them to get right. Build the last segment because it was not included in the project. Uh, so I'm working on that separately.
Thank you, Mr. Forehand. Thank you, Mr. Bates. All right, have a good day. Move on to item, agenda item number two, appointments. Mr. Forehand, for Social Services Board, you going to wait till next meeting?
No, Friday.
Okay. Um, Mr. Forehand, at this point, you have a person for social.
This, uh, this Karen Mason.
Karen Mason? All right, Mr. Forehand has recommended Mr. Karen Mason for the Social Services, uh, Board for the Madison District. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Mr. Karen Mason is appointed to the Social Services Board for the Madison District. We will come back to the Recreation Advisory Committee, the Broadband Advisory Committee for Fort Royal, Mrs. Long.
Yes, sir. The Broadband Advisory Committee, I'd like to nominate, uh, Jonathan or John Street.
Second.
All right, there's a motion, second, that we nominate Mr. John Street to the Broadband Advisory Committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? He is appointed. Uh, final appointment for tonight is the Economic Development Authority. Uh, we have one for Fort Royal and one for Western Carolina. Mr. Black, you ready?
Okay. I would like to re-nominate Mr. Carter.
David Carter? Andy Carter.
Second.
There's a, are you, is, you're both, Ms. Long, do you have a?
And I'd like to nominate Mr. Kent Farmer.
Kent Farmer?
All right, I'll second both of them.
Okay, there is a motion of proper second that we appoint Mr. Uh, Danny Carter and Mr. Uh, Farmer to the Economic Development Authority. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries also. Moving on to the consent agenda. Uh, approval amendments, approval of warrants, approval of planned completion schedule, proposed supplemental appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-one, twenty-two to the general properties budget. That's replacing the signs for U.S. Route one for just a tiny U.S. Route one, approved engineering task contract. Proposed supplemental appropriations to fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two with Commonwealth Attorney Budget, and that's for additional office space for the assistant that we approved for the, the additional lawyer that we appointed, that we approved funding for that. And finally, item G, approval of livestock damages claim. Anyone wish to pull any of the consent agenda items?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just pull the Planning Commission this evening just to talk about.
The schedule?
The schedule.
Okay. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. I would like to just have a real quick question on E.
On E, and that is the, uh, the engineering task contract? Anyone else wish to pull anything on the consent agenda, consent agenda? Can I get a motion on the consent agenda item to approve A, B, D, F, and G?
So moved, Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a proper second, that we approve agenda items A, B, D, F, and G. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda item number C, uh, letter C, Mr. Sealy.
Mr. Chairman, in, in looking at all of the planning commission actions, and all of these seem like they're going to hit public hearing with the planning commission at the same time. Is that true, Mr. Fincham?
We have been scheduling, uh, the public hearings on the solar projects. Uh, we had, we've had six public hearings so far. We had them in separate months to try to space out the applications. Uh, planning commission work sessions on the applications, and then those documents coming to the board. I think the earliest the board might see a request for public hearing would be at your December meeting for your first one.
Because I looked at all these dates, all being October fourteenth in the planning commission, um, schedule that we received, and it just, if we end up with all of these in one evening, I mean, we'll be here from dusk, I mean, from, from dark till dawn.
Yes, sir. We actually have three on the fourteenth, uh, Thursday night, uh, the first three, C C Solar. Um, the one on Route two, uh, up near Stonewall Jackson Road, and the one over on Sean Road in the western part of county. Twenty-eight will have a three board.
Is there any way we can get some, I mean, because they come in the board package, they go right to public hearing. And, and I don't know about everybody else, but I'm not ready to, to get it on a Thursday and hear it on a Tuesday. I think I need a little more time to at least read what's there and, and assimilate some of the information. So is there any way that we can get something, I don't mean, I'm not looking for the final, but something early on in the board package to read, because some of these look extensive.
Uh, they are. Yes, we, we can get, uh, a copy of the application and the staff report, uh, the planning commission received. Um, and any recommendations from the commission, uh, to you ahead of time. Um, let me begin with Lisa and we'll see if we can get that info to you, uh, just as a supplement when you have your next, uh, update on planning commission actions.
Because I just see these coming and, and even if we get three, they're going to be each different and require extensive readings. And just looking at the, just looking at them in the, in the schedule, I was like, whoa. Every one of these seem, and they're all multiple parcels and multiple individuals and multiple locations. So there's, I mean, we're bouncing from Reed Church all the way down Route one.
Yeah, and we may recommend a even more expansive schedule of public hearings at, at the board level. You know, we purposely spread them out over three regular meetings at the planning commission. We may want to, for example, double that, that timeframe at board so that you don't get your second batch of public hearings while you're still dealing with, with your first batch of public hearings, uh, to help space it out.
Well, and, and I just thought this would be opportunity to at least talk about that because I read these and I'm just, it makes your head spin just reading what they're, what they're looking at. So if we can find a way to space them out so that we're not, we're not doing public hearings from the time we get here till dawn the next day, and then you turn around the next board meeting, you're doing the same thing. Because we don't do anybody any favors in that process.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Motion to approve.
I, I'll make the motion to approve the schedule.
No. Uh, there's been a motion to approve agenda item C, approval of planning commission schedule. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, consent agenda item E.
I guess this is just a more of a generalized question, but at work beginning to grow, I see that you were working, we're pointing to a new well here, a new open area. How is our supply handling this as far as the new growth?
So currently, we do not have a lot of reserve capacity. So we have some funding. We're looking at drilling up to four wells in Pendleton. And we've also got a place on Golden Door Road. We're looking at two or three other wells. So what I'd like to do is be able to drill wells and be able to do testing to give the quantity and quality so that I know what I can bring on is necessary. So that's kind of our goal over the next few years is drilling all of these wells. So currently, we have one well in Pendleton. We've got two other locations that we, we have already staked and had the state approved. And we're trying to get access to the property, actually drill the well to find out quality and quantity. But this helps us moving down. We do know that we've got a two hundred gallon per minute well that we can permit currently in Pendleton. It does require treatment, which is part of what this test contract is for. So that will help us go a long ways as we continue to see growth.
Is, is there any way, and I know it was probably done in the past, we haven't, we haven't had a water meeting. I know it's been a while since we've had, like, the water. We did the long-term water plan. Is there a way you can get us numbers on what the system, I mean, because we are growing really, really quickly, sir? Uh, especially in the Pendleton, you know, ladies in the area. Is there a way that you can get us estimates on, it doesn't have to be perfect science, but how much growth that we can possibly handle based on, you know, average gallon per day usage and what the system is now and how much, um, we can handle moving forward?
Absolutely.
I, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes.
Motion to approve, Mr. Forehand.
Yes, motion to approve.
Um, there's a motion by Mr. Black to approve, uh, the approval of the engineering task contract.
Second.
A second of Mrs. Long. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we, well, mm-hmm, yeah, I was, I was actually going to do number eight. We're going to go ahead and continue and move to agenda item number eight. We had some discussion about the revocation of special exemption permit for the Virginia Sports Complex. Mr. Fincham?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, you have a brief, uh, update, uh, as of Friday, uh, concerning the status of the installation of the, uh, alternative, uh, system in Sports Complex. Uh, the system has been installed. Um, they have, they started the system in manual mode. It, it's been, uh, converted over to, to automatic mode. Um, they are in the process of, of, of finishing the testing of that system, uh, getting all the paperwork necessary to, to get an O P from the health department. Uh, the paperwork has not yet been submitted to them. Uh, we checked on that this morning. Uh, but they are aware of the status of the system. Uh, at issue, I think, is not necessarily the revocation of special exception permit, but the status of the pump and haul permit with the county. Um, I, um, I think, uh, Mr. Shegel is here. Uh, they submitted, uh, I think, s- part of the paperwork. Uh, but he can tell you, uh, what the status of that is. And I do not believe the board yet has authorized the extension of that pump and haul permit. And you may not wish to do so since they are discouraged to, uh, to have their, their permit, permit from the health department.
Yeah, I talked to Mr. Whiteman, but I'll let Mr. Shegel, um, speak first and then I'll add Mr. Whiteman's comments. Mr. Shegel, good evening.
The, uh, Sports Complex has submitted all of their information. They have their bond, they have their permit in place. Um, they did pay all of their fees. Uh, that permit was extended to this board meeting. So, um, at a minimum, the board would need to extend that if they so wished, um, to whatever date that you would so determine.
My understanding is that they are no longer on pump and haul, but their, the system is running and, uh, it takes a little while to do a nitrogen sample, I guess is what Mr. Whiteman says, and that's what they're waiting on now. Is that correct then?
That's my understanding from Mr. Whiteman, that they're doing some final tweaking as well. The paperwork's been submitted to the health department, but they are operating on the new system with health department knowledge. Even though, so nothing's going into pump and haul system between August. So I don't see any need for the board to extend the pump and haul permit.
Right.
They're, they, we don't have the final O P from the health department. They're working to get that and they're using their new system.
Correct.
Be no need for pump and haul.
Yeah. Finally. So board members, um, again, there is no need for the pump and haul to be extended. And, you know, the, the health department proposed on it yesterday. So they're working for the final reading on the, the system has to operate for a period of time because nitrogen readings, what Mr. Whiteman told me. But other than that, they're all systems go. So I, I think they've met the conditions that we set forth.
You need a motion. Would you like a motion to not revoke their special exception or no action?
No. I don't think we need any action, really. Mr. Whiteman?
No, no action. I'm sorry.
Yeah, just updates. No action. All right. It is seven seventeen. We're going to like take a ten-minute break and we'll come back at seven thirty for a public comment, and then we'll move on with the agenda. We stand and reset. Thank you. County Board Supervisor October twelfth meeting back to order. Next on their agenda is public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for citizens to make, uh, comments about any issue they wish to. It cannot be on the public hearing for tonight or anticipated within the next sixty days. It's not a debate, it's your opportunity to speak directly to the board. Please don't address any board member individually. And with that, ask you to state your name, your voting district, and your concerns. You'll have three minutes to, uh, express those concerns. Public comment is now open. Is there anyone who'd like to speak during public comment? If you would, please come forward.
Alan Reese for Royal District. Again, we're here for fire and rescue and the current staffing and wanting to spend money for new station. I compiled some numbers for the board so they can see over a thirteen-month period from January first twenty twenty to January thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, what the average response is for some of the stations out with the exception of the Bowling Green, Ladies Smith, and Prowler. Upper Carolina was tunged eleven times in thirteen months, nights and weekends when paid personnel was non-failing. How many times were they not from that they had calls for? We don't have that information. Sparta Fire, total of a hundred and seventy-nine fire calls. They responded to sixty-nine of them, thirty-eight point five-five percent. Port Royal, two hundred and two total calls on the fire. Eighty-six of those were unanswered. The fire side got out the door fifty-six percent of the time. The EMS side, two hundred and thirty-three calls. Two hundred and five unanswered. Only twenty-eight first dude got out the door, twelve percent. But you guys want to build a new station? Give the people that already have stations and pay the same money, let them have some coverage. Twelve percent of EMS calls is causing deaths in the county. It's ridiculous. The board needs to do better and fund public safety for everybody in the county. Not just Bowling Green, not just Ladies Smith, not just Formal Church. The county is bigger than those three jurisdictions. There are plenty of people that live elsewhere in the county. We pay taxes the whole time, but as you see, we don't get the coverage. Twenty and thirty-minute response times for a cardiac arrest, a stroke. That's a death sentence. It shouldn't be this way. The board needs to do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during the public? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak during the public? Final call. Is there anyone who would like to speak during the public? Seeing no one coming forward, public comment is closed. We will move on to our public hearings. Agenda item number four, RZ zero-one twenty-seventeen, Woodlawn Belmont LLC owner at Mr. Fincham, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Your first public hearing tonight is RZ zero-one dash twenty-seventeen, Woodlawn Belmont LLC owner at requesting a zoning amendment to amend the existing proppers for Belmont North Two, which is zone planned residential development with condition consisting of a hundred and eighty-four acres more or less on tax parcel eighty-three dash A dash one. The purpose of the amendment is to modify the proppers and general development plan accepted with RZ eleven dash two thousand and seven, including but not, uh, limited to, uh, modifying the infrastructure, which would include roads and utilities, eliminate certain proppers, including transportation improvements, eliminate a prepayment of public utility fees, uh, increase the cash proper value from what was originally proper, uh, to modify the land dedication and construction proppers for public uses, including the elimination of a fire station and to establish a construction schedule and commitment to, um, uh, community recreation center for the project. Uh, as the board will note, um, the original application, uh, for this amendment started back in two As the board will note, the original application for this amendment started back in two thousand and seventeen. With the request for a proper amendment. The planning commission at that time held a public hearing and forwarded it to the board with a recommendation of denial. Once it got to the board, the application sat dormant for several years at request of the applicant. There was discussion about making modifications to the proppers and the GDP. Because of the economy, the, the applications sat dormant for, for those several years. The applicant in late twenty twenty requested that the act, uh, application be brought back before the board. And the board referred the application back to the planning commission. Which again sent it out, sent the recommendation to the board, this time with the recommendation of approval on a three to one, but. The requested modification, as previously stated, would be to amend the development plan. And to amend the proppers that were previously committed to by the applicant with RZ eleven dash two thousand and seven. And the modified proppers are included in your packet. The items I think that drawn the most attention for the board. Are the elimination of the, or the request of elimination of the land dedication. And the construction of a fire station on the Belmont North property. And the re. The redesign of the Drive Ridge Road extension from a four lane divided road to a two lane road. The applicant's also committed to increasing the cash proppers. To a figure starting at forty eight hundred dollars per dwelling unit. With a annual multiplier built into that cash property. App is also proper to. Commit to fronting or prepayment of the cash proppers. Fifty units up to a hundred and fifty units total. At which time the builder would then pick up the proper payments on a lot by lot basis. You have the requested amended GDP in your packet. That really has not changed from significantly from the previous GDP. That was submitted by the applicant and with that, I'll address any questions the board may have.
Board members, board members, any questions before I open up the public hearing? Mr. Thomas, Mr. Finch, was there another transportation impact analysis done?
A transportation, an updated transportation impact analysis was done, it was submitted to our office. It was forwarded to V dot, I believe, mid to late last week. We have not received any comment from V dot related to that.
We wouldn't debate go without knowing that, okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing for RZ zero one twenty seventeen, Woodlawn Belmont LLC. Public hearing is now open, if there's anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter, please come forward. Is the applicant here, Mr. Finch? Would the applicant like to come forward and speak, this is now the time to do it.
We need to change in that.
Ready.
With heavy heart, I want to make, I would like to make a statement first with heavy heart. Caroline County is promised Hall of Fame member Frank Sealy and my good friend, business partner, is in hospice. So just wanted to let y'all know that he has had a lot to do with what's happened. Woodlawn Belmont LLC is coming here tonight as to your approval with the changes that. Finch has indicated and we. Had in earlier packages to you had prepared a. Physical impact analysis which showed. How much increases in water and sewer fees would happen over the life of this project and the taxes. That was provided in your current package and in prior packages. Then since we, I was here in May. Changes that we have to the, since May. Had to do with proper nine and ten, which was a prepayment of water and sewer fees. The water utility department, excuse me, has indicated that that's not what they want, so. Proper number nine and ten from the original has been deleted. In your package, I don't know whether y'all seen it or not, but I provided a key. Goes down through all the properties from the original one that indicates what has been changed. I don't know what. Right, we all have that. In reference. To the original proper eight and nine deleted for the Caroline County Utility Department. As Mr. Finch has indicated that we are requesting that the proper concerning. Drive Ridge Road be reduced from a four lane highway to a two lane highway. Also included in your packages was the updated TIA. And there's a summary letter in there. And that was done by Grove, Grove Shade. And in their cover letter, they have indicated a number of things. Related to traffic. One is that Belmont Boulevard and the Loop Road can handle all of the traffic without a problem. And as everybody probably knows, there's a lot less people commuting now because of working from home. And they have factored that into there. They have also indicated in their cover letter, they've got the back, all the backup material is included behind the cover. That Drive Ridge Road doesn't need to be four lanes from a traffic state. And also there was discussion about turning lanes. And they pointed out, I think was a very important thing for our community. When they stated that a left turn lane and a right turn lane speeds traffic along, look at that, everybody knows. But we've got a twenty five mile an hour zone, we want people to be going slower than faster. And also, which you may not realize, but on Drive Ridge Road, there are three crosses located to the best chance. Slash bike tracks and so having it to be four lanes would be further distance across. Two lanes less plus the fact that we're requesting that no turn lanes from the standpoint of safety. Be installed because we want the track to go slower. The other thing which. That takes us down from. Proppers twelve through fifteen. Yeah, the numbers have changed, this is from the original, not, not the proper statement that's in the package currently. These are the numbers of the original. So with, with Drive Ridge Road was from twelve through sixteen. And eighteen, we just changed Boulevard Road and twenty two, we just put in that paragraph that county required. Twenty four, this is a little old history, but since I'm a parent, it's not serviced, to my knowledge, Caroline County. We're asking for that to be deleted, that was an item in there. And then the one that we did suggest changing to help people quicker and faster in Belmont and Common Church. Is in the original proper was the recreation center was to be constructed by three hundred building permits. And what we have indicated in our proper statement. That we would have designs done by the fiftieth building permit, the seventy fifth building permit, we would have the site plan approved. And we would have it both the pool and the clubhouse opened by the hundredth building permit. Number thirty seven had to do with some things that the county does approve. And so per the director of planning, he has requested that be deleted, which is course in our property statements. And then it gets down to what Mr. Finch had indicated is the cash proppers. Which will bring us up almost to one point seven billion dollars. The other item that was in discussion in May had to do with the. Instruction traffic and it says in the original proper number thirteen, instruction traffic will not go through. Belmont and Common Church and it would be our responsibility as the developer. To ensure that's forced to the best of any, you know, a non-police force with signage, whatever is required. And we've got a commitment from Ryan that they will enforce that. Does any board member have any questions?
Let me open up, see if there are any other comments and then we'll come back for questions.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so just have a seat, let me see if anybody else wishes to speak. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak regarding RZ zero one twenty seventeen, Woodlawn Belmont LLC? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Seeing nobody coming forward, I'll close the public comment. Board members, you can now ask your questions. Board members, you have any questions? Let me go to the last one, Mr. Forehanded. Mr. Forehanded, Mr. Black?
Not at this time.
Not at this time, Mr. Sealy?
Just a couple. Did Mr. Shiegel, did we, were we the original, were we the originator of deleting proper number nine, the advanced payment of utility? And water connection?
There was a discussion last time this was in front of the board, myself and Mr. Thomas, we had some conversations as well. That the prepayment underneath of our reduced fees would not be the best position for Caroline County, so. It was removed because of the reduced fees it were currently under.
Okay, and so the same thing with ten?
If it's the same, yes sir, for water answer.
Water answer, so we didn't want any, we didn't want it prepaid for those, okay. I guess my sticking point for this is the original fire station proper was two point five million dollars plus two acres. As I calculate the proper payments. It comes out to two point, about two point four million, you gave us a number of like one point nine.
Uh, one point seven, so that was increased from the original.
But you realized that the original fire station was two point five million?
Yes. The economic conditions from two thousand and seven. Or less paying lots, therefore. It's just not the same situation. We realize that. And also we, just as Mr. Finch said, we're prepaying cash proppers. At the, at a hundred and then a hundred and fifty, we're prepaying those, then it would go back to one building we pay. It's the apply for each one.
Cause I was on the board at the time that this went through and Mr. Thomas worked real hard. To actually negotiate all these proppers, as you saw probably in your, in your proper statement.
Yes.
There was handwriting in the, in the margin for what took place at the board meeting that night before the public hearing. To negotiate those last few and.
The, the written comments were, I believe it said that it had to be built, had to hundreds, hundreds of years built and committed. And it was changed to be within. Period of time, less than a year.
Okay, those are my questions, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sealy, Mrs. Long?
Out of curiosity, there's a lot of people in this new vision plan and you've got a lot of townhouses and villas. No independent homes, right, no family homes, no freestanding homes. Homeowners association regulations, do we have any of those that are going to be part of this development, this community?
I'm sorry, I haven't understood.
Are you going to have a standard of, of. I guess. Property maintenance, the conditions for people who purchase the townhouses or the villas? Will there be like a homeowners association?
Yes, it's going to be a homeowners association, we have to have that because of the rec center and the pool. Because remember the pool is open to Belmont and Common Church and it has to be a homeowners association.
So this will feed off of that association, just be a second part or individual?
It'll be owned by the homeowners. Initially, the developer would be paying most of the money to the homeowners to do this. And then as it works, it's through the process of house like that, then the homeowners then take full responsibility.
Are any of these set for certain ages?
Yes, yes ma'am, it's set in the proppers, I have to look it up, I don't know, but I think there's seventy two age restricted villas.
Seventy two?
Yes, and the villas are poplexes.
And how many bedrooms are, what you break down on bedroom sizes, how many units are one bedroom, how many are two, how many are four? Do you know?
Nothing has been discussed, man.
So you really don't know how many people could be. In this community?
On it, we can go by its consistence, which is the average size possible.
Okay.
Ryan Holmes, you know, built according to, you know, the plan. We have never, we have not addressed any, so I'm hoping to answer that question.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Thomas, you want me to go ahead and go left?
Yes, sir.
The change that you're requesting from four lane to two lane. Certainly. That's a concern for me. You, you speak about safety, but certainly I think four lanes would be a bit safer than two lanes. Particularly on Drive Ridge Road and. So that's a concern, can you, can you address that again, your rationale?
Yes.
As to why you think two lane. From, it's better than that, that four lanes that were, were previous requests?
If I'm correct in my understanding, there was a thought from Drive Ridge Road at the railroad tracks. On up toward Common Church, there would be need for a four lane road to bring people down to Drive Ridge Road. And again, I never was privy to all of this in written form, so I'm making supposition when I make the statement. In two thousand and six and seven, when this was all done, the. Rail station on seventeen bike tracks hadn't even been conceived, it was a thought process. And it was constructed after the two thousand and seven. Approval of this and, you know, I wasn't, again, I'm making the statement as I wasn't privy to it. What I've been told, like from Frank Sealy was, the thought was to go from the railroad tracks all the way to Lady Smith. And that was the original reason why they wanted four lanes and then also the profits called for calming checks. Uh, on the four lane highway. And then also the profits called for calming checks, uh, on the four lane highway. So you would have two lane, in my understanding, you'd have a barrier. And so people were making S turns going down highway. And from the updated TIA, they said, they're the ones that indicated to me that number one, two lanes would handle all the. That's number one. Number two, turning lanes speed traffic long faster. And the idea of a twenty-five mile an hour zone is to keep people at twenty-five flights.
So that's an, that's an opinion, not a fact. Speed determines how fast people, not, you can have a hundred lanes and people moving twenty-five miles an hour and it's still safe. So that's kind of an opinion. I don't think that's, that's research. I think, you know, again, I'm, and I'm not here to ban on with you. I guess my second, uh, question is the, the impact for the people who are already there. I feel that, um, just talk to me about the, the impact that these additional, uh, units would have on the folks living there.
You mean at Belmont Carmel Church?
Yeah, Belmont.
Based on the conversation I have, like Sealy, Triple Crown and Belmont Boulevard were built to handle the traffic from Belmont Boulevard. And also where the entrance is on, on Monture, uh, there would be a certain percentage. I don't have it figured for me, that would be going out on Monture to the Loop Road and wouldn't be going through. And then the traffic engineers estimated that people going to bowling green would go out Monture Road as opposed to going through Belmont Carmel Church. So originally, the original design with VDOT was to have Triple Crown wider than normal. And Belmont Boulevard wider to handle the traffic.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Thomas?
Staples, first of all, I need to express my prayers to Frank and, of course, his wife Linda, and I know Matt was your partner. You know, you do have my prayers, Mr. Park.
Thank you.
I need to, um, and, and the other, I want to say, as a developer, I've, I've been on the board for a few years. Developer, Mr. Sealy was one of those who actually did what he said he was going to do for the most part. So, uh, we, we really did appreciate that from the county perspective. Uh, I need to ask Mr. Fincham a couple of questions about that.
Yes.
Mr. Fincham?
Yes, sir.
I, I understand that when this came to us, um, back in May, the planning commission voted for a pool, is that correct?
They voted for this with the recommendation of approval by a vote through the board.
Okay. Now, were these changes, what we have before us, that did not go back to the planning commission? That was a, it's here before this for a public hearing because there were significant changes to the proffer, correct?
There were changes to the proppers that the planning commission did have before them. Mr. Staples had made some additional changes, which is what necessitated this additional public hearing.
Public hearing here tonight was correct. But what's before us tonight did not go back to the planning commission?
That is correct.
Okay. I appreciate that and I just wanted to make sure I clarified the process, first of all. The other question I had was regarding the, it's not the, the, the proffer impact, I guess. And what she would put in our packet was the difference between, of course, I lost the right. The difference between what the original proppers were and basically the difference or what you stated here was the savings that, uh, to the applicant. And I understand that difference is almost seven thousand dollars per dwelling unit, six thousand eight hundred seventy-six.
Yes, that was simply an analysis of the requested changes in the proppers. The reduction of four lane to two lane, uh, taking out certain proppers such as the, the proffer towards the Fred Bus Service, which no longer exists in the county. There was also a proffer for, uh, an educational proffer, um, I think it was like five hundred dollars per dwelling unit, something to that effect. It wasn't a direct cash or proffer to the county, but there was a cash value to the proffer. So the analysis looked at that cash value. It also looked at, um, um, the proper increase, the cash proper increase at the applicant home.
Okay, so is it, it's, I, I guess it's fair to say if I multiply seven thousand times five hundred dwelling units, three point five million is the savings to the applicant based on the proper changes?
Roughly speaking.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, I'm just doing fuzzy, easy math. Five times seven is thirty-five. I can do that part. So that's about the difference in the impact to the applicant based on these changes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and where are the proppers? Do we still see the commitment for an education facility?
Uh, that is, I think, proffer number ten, it got labeled.
Let me find it. Yeah, but I, I have five different versions, so I want to make sure we recognize this right.
Uh, actually, it's proffer thirty-three. I'm sorry, yeah, it says public safety, but it's proffer number thirty-three, uh, related to the, uh, twenty acres for, uh, potential school site.
That was the potential community college site, that the potential, uh, Caroline County Public School site. I seem to recall there were two, two school sites in the proffer, so.
I think it was twenty acres used for recreational, I mean, for an educational facility. I think the way it's written, it would be four acre Caroline County Public School site if needed.
Then there wasn't one, there wasn't a proffer for a community college site?
I'd have to go back and look at the original, uh, approved proppers, I'd look at that real quick.
Okay, if you would. I think both of those were due tonight and, um, I'm, I'm letting the county attorney know that I'm being very careful with my words tonight. Cause I know you always like that. That's why I'm only talking to Mr. Fincham. But the other thing is we did not get the VDOT traffic impact. So. And that would, that would address Mr. Underwood's concern and I think a concern that other people have expressed before.
Uh, actually, the VDOT traffic impact analysis, the traffic impact analysis we did was.
Right.
We did not receive VDOT comment.
Let me state it correctly. We, we have their impact analysis, but we do not have a response from VDOT. Which, which could affect issues in one way or the other as to how the applicant would handle certain things as far as transportation.
The original proffer, Mr. Thomas?
It's good. That's okay. I, I've made that mistake once this evening already, so help yourself.
Was for public school purposes. So that, that proffer is not changes for public school purposes.
And there's not a proffer for community college, which was one of the ones that I thought we had in there originally.
Uh, do, no. The, the original twenty acres in the original proffer was for public school purposes.
Which is still part of this?
Yes.
This, this proposal?
Yes, sir.
When did you expect last question, when do you expect VDOT to have a response to the traffic impact analysis that they got last week?
Um, I can check with, uh, Ms. Oyster tomorrow. Uh, she's actually in charge of that section of, of VDOT, so I can check with her tomorrow. I know an email was sent to, um, the land use section either Thursday or Friday, uh, but we've not seen a response. I would think that we could have at least some initial comments before the next meeting.
Okay. Um, I'm, I'm trying to have all the data possible before we make a decision, cause decisions have, uh, well, I'm just trying to make sure we have all, all the data before we make a decision. So I'd like to see that VDOT analysis before we voted. That's just my opinion. If the rest of the board would like to vote now, that's another story. But I, I'd motion to at least defer it for thirty days to our next board meeting when we get the VDOT analysis.
Mr. Mr. Thomas, um, is, is that the form of a motion?
Yes.
Is the applicant okay with that?
The applicant has nothing to do with that.
Okay. You may not want to defer, okay. So Mr. Thomas has put a motion before us that we defer RZ zero-one twenty seventeen Woodlawn slash Belmont LLC until which point we get the VDOT analysis from the traffic study. Is there a second?
A second.
A second by Mr. Forehand, any discussion? Mr. Forehand?
Thank you.
Any discussion? All the favors say aye? Any opposed? The ayes have it. We're going to defer this for thirty days, which will be these, our next meeting will be the second Thursday in November. I'm sorry. What is it? November ninth. Right? That's the thirty days, so you want to?
Is that a guarantee that we get those numbers by, uh, what happens if we don't have the numbers?
Mr. Fincham, are you sure we can have the analysis from VDOT by? In time to take a good look at?
I cannot guarantee that we'll have the response, but I will do my best.
Then do we want to go to the first meeting in December? Board members, it's the only, it's only, it's the only meeting. But, but the ninth is less than thirty days and there's no guarantee that we'll have the study. So the only sure way is to go to the second Tuesday of December.
I will ask the applicant in that case if that's, is December okay with you or is that?
You don't need him.
Yeah, just being courteous this time, really.
That's all right.
Yeah, it really was our choice either way. If we don't have to report the ninth, we could just say we don't have to report, so we all have to defer ourselves, yeah.
Have the applicant come and then we not address it, but we don't have to report, just Fincham will be able to tell.
I mean, we, we, we'd know if we do the ninth. Yeah.
Mr. Fincham, no need, we'll defer till November ninth, at which time hopefully we'll have the study. If not, then we'll defer until the second Tuesday of December.
That is fine, Mr. Chairman, and that ninth of November deferral would be dependent upon us having the results by Thursday when we put the board.
Correct, that's correct.
VDOT, Mr. Fincham, you have plenty of time to know about that.
Correct, correct.
Thank you very much, sir.
May I, may I address one?
Yes, sir.
Thomas said, um, from the, I'm sorry, from when we came before the planning commission, the only thing that we have changed. Utility Department deleted the two of that. The only thing we've done is, uh, add the prepayment of cash profit, cash profit. So to your question, we have not made any changes, but we're offering, uh, the prepayment of the cash profit. Plus we upped the schedule on the recency, but they did not see the one of those. But forty-eight hundred dollar, that.
Right, and, and, and changes to the proppers after the public hearing that are deemed significant by the county attorney require another public hearing. And I guess the county attorney deemed those changes.
Right, that was, that was my understanding. But to your question about the planning commission, we didn't, we didn't initiate any reduction that we can say in the property.
Yeah.
We upped them.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. We'll see you on hopefully November ninth, at which time we'll discuss the traffic study.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, board members. All right, public hearing, uh, agenda item number five, proposed agenda, proposed amendment of the chapter fifty-six of the Code of Carolina, the hunting, Mr. Park.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, this one should be significantly simpler than the last. As you know, back in April, the board approved amendments to the county's hunting ordinance. The most significant change being that we, uh, now allow hunters to use rifles to hunt deer during the prime season, uh, from elevated stand eight feet above the ground. And the changes, uh, were then sent to the Virginia Department of Wildlife Management. They were included in their, um, hunting and trapping in Virginia Digest. Uh, however, we received a, an email from Wildlife Management advising that the county ordinance references a rifle caliber of greater than twenty-two. And under Virginia Administrative Code, deer can only be hunted with rifles greater than twenty-three caliber. So, uh, therefore, it's a small nuance, but the, the current ordinance could create the impression that it's legal to hunt, uh, deer in Carolina with twenty-two caliber rifle. And, uh, that is in conflict with what the state requires. Unfortunately, no one caught that the first go around and, um, that is the purpose of the ordinance amendments. Uh, everything else that was approved in April, uh, would, would remain the same. It's only a matter of correction.
Thank you, Mr. Park.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'll open up the public hearing for the agenda item number five, proposed amendment of chapter fifty-six of the Code of Carolina County. Public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter? That's called, is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding this matter? Seeing no one coming forward, the public hearing is closed. How does board wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the proposed hunting amendment of chapter fifty-six of the Code of Carolina County.
There's a motion and a proffer second that we adopt the proposed, that we adopt the amendment of chapter fifty-six of the Code of Carolina County regarding hunting. All the favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I did have a quick question for our county attorney.
Re- regarding.
The hunting. It was a question I wanted to put it on tape, just to make sure everybody's aware. Uh, just because there was a typographical error in the ordinance, we're still legal to hunt rifles in Carolina County.
That's correct.
Really, we had passed that effectively until tonight, someone could have hunted a two-point-three.
I think that would be against state regulations.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Park.
Yes, sir.
Agenda item number six, proposed amendment of chapter one oh three, article nine of the Code of Carolina County elderly and disabled tax relief, Mr. Park.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Bassoon and his staff have been working on updates to the county's elderly and disabled tax relief ordinance. I'm going to, uh, describe the purpose or summarize the, the purpose of the proposed changes. Uh, the first change would provide a prorated real estate tax exemption if the dwelling is jointly owned, um, and, uh, by someone other than the spouse, if siblings, for example. And one, but not all of the owners, uh, is either sixty-five or permanently disable. And this exemption does not currently exist, so it would create a new, uh, partial prorated exemption. The second change is that, is that the combined income threshold for eligibility would be raised to forty thousand, fifty thousand. The second change is, is that the combined income threshold for eligibility would be raised from forty thousand to fifty thousand, and the net combined, uh, financial worth eligibility threshold would be increased from eighty-five thousand to one hundred thousand. The amendments would also, uh, simplify the way eligibility is determined. If the net financial worth threshold is met, the taxpayer would then receive a flat percentage exemption based on, uh, income brackets of ten thousand dollars. So, for example, if you had a taxpayer with household income up to, uh, ten thousand dollars, they would receive a ninety-five percent exemption. Uh, household income between ten thousand and one dollars and twenty thousand would receive an eighty percent exemption, and so on. The current ordinance, what it does is factor in both, uh, financial worth and household income to determine the percentage of tax relief. If you look at the tables under, um, section one oh three sixty-four for both the current and proposed ordinance, I think that'll make more sense. It simplifies the whole process. Finally, the, uh, the ordinance would enable the commissioner to extend the deadline to file, uh, from, from March thirty-first to December first, like in the case of first-time applicants or if there is a hardship. Uh, Mr. Bassoon is, um, proposing that the recommended changes would take effect if the first year, January fourth twenty-two. There is an estimated revenue loss in the county of the project of thirty thousand dollars. And, uh, that concludes my introductions, Mr. Chairman. Are there any further questions, uh, as you proceed, or I'll?
Thank you, Mr. Pardon.
Yes, sir.
Let me see if the board members have any questions before I open up public, uh, public hearing, excuse me.
Mr. Thomas, um, Mr. Bassoon was there, this is part of what we worked on when we did the emergency ordinance, Mr. Bassoon was doing it at, uh, on time beforehand. Mr. Bassoon, you mentioned at that time that the table we have are the ordinance, could be modified by the board, but you, uh, haven't changed it, so you estimate the thirty thousand dollar loss in revenue based on these numbers?
Yes, sir, and, um, it is, what we're seeing with the adopted emergency ordinance, we've had about ten new, um, folks eligible and are in the program now, we're going to do a vacance for them, so it can use kind of where we were between eight to ten, twelve folks, just in this timeframe. It's really, you know, we, we really don't know how many more people would be eligible, especially as it's a threshold. So the thirty thousand is, it's as good as the guest, yeah.
Kind of all, yes, all of our. Okay, thank you, sir, that was the one thing I wanted to make a little clearer.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I will put the public hearing for the proposed amendment to chapter one oh three, article nine of the Code of Caroline County elderly and disabled tax relief. Is there anyone else, is there anyone who'd like to speak regarding this amendment?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and Board.
Good evening, Mr. Bassoon.
I would like to commend this board on adopting the emergency ordinance at the last meeting. This is a very exciting program for our elderly, it is reflective, um, we have a record kept of all of the folks that have called in for questioning and trying to receive this eligibility. They're very excited about it, very open to conversation, they understand the criteria moving forward with these proposed new, um, amendments to this ordinance, I think it would be very exciting for the elderly in Caroline County. Thank you for your.
Thank you, Mr. Bassoon. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding this amendment? For chapter one oh three? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding the amendment, chapter one oh three, article nine? Seeing no one coming forward, this public hearing is closed. Board members, how do you wish you proceed?
Yes, sir, Mr. Thomas.
One more question.
Absolutely. As a clarification, Mr. Bassoon, in the chart that I referenced before, which I'm sure you're very familiar with, it says percentage of exemption, maximum asset excluding value of residence and ten acres of land. And then you've got zero to forty-five, forty-five to eighty-five. So a senior owns a house that's worth a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars? They're not part of this, or that is excluded?
No, it's excluded, with the elderly program, the primary residence and up to ten acre, similar to the veterans program, uh, for real estate exemption goes hand in hand, so the primary structure plus the land up to ten, that's off, off the table, that doesn't get included in the asset.
So I'm trying to make sure I understand it, and hopefully I can help people listening understand, so a senior has a house worth a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and it's on four acres, that is excluded. If, and then if their income is less than forty-five thousand dollars, they would get a discount on their tax.
The, if the asset network in this case was on, as it sits now, under eighty-five thousand, it would all come into play, and then the percentages would prop and match up, or whatever it is. The new proposal with the table, I think what might be a little bit confusing here is, right now, the percentage is based off of the income and asset. What I'm proposing is to remove the asset piece as part of the exemption, so we're just going with the percentage of the income. So if they're under the income threshold, they're good.
I'm, you stick to my example to make sure I understand.
They're, they're good, but then you start doing the asset, so long as all of the assets, the network of the assets, stay under the, let's say a hundred thousand, that is good, that part's done, and then we factor the percentage off of the value of property and all that kind of stuff, so. But in the assets, the home and the land up to ten acres isn't included in the asset factoring at all. So yes, if someone owns a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar house and they're on four acres, and they're under fifty, and, and all their income, they get social security, they might get an annuity from a retirement, and it's under fifty, they're good. Then we start looking at the assets, they might, um, have a vehicle, and they owe fifteen thousand on it, that's what's counted. They have a, a stock in something that's under, so then that, okay, good. Then the percentage is going to be based on the income, so if their income is in the forty thousand range, we come across the table and write that percentage.
Okay, and I know, I know it's hard to explain.
It is.
But I want to make sure that, especially when their language is excluding the, you know, I really want to make sure people can understand it, but I'm sure there will be people who come to your office and say, uh, do I qualify, and then you'll be able to help. Okay. There's an income bracket. So, so, all right, on, on, on that note, I will make a motion that we move ahead with the, uh, proposed changes in chapter one oh three of the Code of Caroline.
Any, any other comments from the discussion? Mr. Bassoon?
Is this consistent with other localities?
It is. We were one of the only ones that were giving our table based on a two-part factoring, and in conjunction with that, moving to the new software system to automate things, we kind of have to take out the two factors, we have to go with one or the other.
So the jurisdictions, both to our north and south, if something's familiar to us? We did, how many? Fifteen different jurisdictions, um, surrounding us.
Yeah, he had a chart.
As close as we could with the two of us. That, that, that off the program. Okay.
I think it's Anno Griffin, Ryko, and Spock, that touch up.
Yeah, I apologize.
I think Jordan was on the list too, but, yeah, they gave you a list of a whole bunch of.
So my.
Thank you, Mr. Pardon.
So, yeah, there's a motion, Mr. Thomas, that we adopt the proposed amendment to chapter one oh three, article nine of the Code of Caroline County elderly and disabled tax relief, can I get a second? Second by Mr. Orhan, any discussion? All the favors say aye? Aye, any opposed? We will adopt this amendment, thank you. Agenda item number seven, special exception zero two twenty twenty-one, Caroline Development LLC owner, Hidden Farm Estate LLC applicant.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, you have back before you tonight, SPX zero two dash twenty twenty-one, they're requesting their, uh, waiver of the mineral lot size, um, on the residual, uh, property of the development known as Bridlewood Subdivision. Board held a public hearing at your last meeting on this item, um, there is some additional information in your packet that was requested at that meeting, uh, you have a, a general lot layout of, of the subdivision as could be developed under the conventional lot standards for the R one zoning district, uh, that I believe Ms. Long requested a copy of that, uh, that had been provided in your packet so that you can prepare, um, what can be done with the fifteen thousand square foot minimum lots versus what, what the applicant is requesting. Uh, there are also a couple of additional, uh.
Mr. Fencham, are what the standards part of the conditions? Are these standards that are in the package part of the conditions in the, in the, in the conditions, take care of the product?
The development standards, um, themselves know are not part of the conditions. The development standards, you base, you look at those standards and you make a determination whether, uh, as a board, you believe that this request meets those, uh, additional development standards.
I think we're getting architectural standard and development.
Oh. Okay. Going back to that clarification, yes, included in your packet are the architectural, uh, typical house styles that the applicant indicated that they wanted to build in this project, as well as certain proppers related to, uh, construction standards for the houses. Your, your, your minimum setback to the house, certain architectural features related to the house, it's, it's a one-page sheet in there, um, that they, uh, that, uh, that condition has been added to reflect the information that was provided by the applicant at the public hearing. I'm sorry, Mr. Seeling, I thought you were talking about the development standards waiver.
That the waiver is not, is, is?
That's not a condition, that's something that you evaluate requests by. You will note under the, uh, existing lot layout, uh, there are, uh, lot numbers are identified in red, uh, it shows lots thirty-one through forty. Um, those lots actually exist today, uh, and were planted with the original Bridlewood subdivision. All those lots actually front on Route six thirty-nine.
That's different than our last call.
Yeah, because the, the invented plan that the applicant has provided, they are, uh, proposing, uh, common area of Route six thirty-nine.
I was looking at the red letters as the current, as the proposed, and I had that.
So all of those, uh, one seventeen through one twenty-eights. Everything in red, Mr. Orhan, the sheet with all the lots identified in red, that based upon fifteen thousand square foot minimum lots size.
So if they're already, they're already planted, that really? It, it, it's a change, they're undeveloped still, so that, so it would be a change.
That, yes, sir.
But that's part of the hundred and twelve, the original hundred and twelve.
But under the hundred and twelve that they could build under the fifteen thousand square foot lot size excludes? Includes these already planted lots along Route six thirty-nine.
I was thinking excluded.
No, they're included as part of the one.
Thirty-one through forty, correct, that's what it's excluded.
Yes, sir.
I think you just said.
I, I don't see any, any information about it. That would be essential for maintaining common.
Yeah, our ordinance requires an HOA wherever there's common area. Yes, yes, sir. Yes, yes, sir. Although there has been some discussion about adding a condition that says the county's not responsible for maintenance of common areas, rec areas, sidewalks, et cetera.
Um, when B dot accepts a road in a neighborhood like Bay City Village, are, they're taking sidewalks too, correct?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fencham, are you sure that wasn't the answer I got? B dot, that they don't do sidewalks is what I was told.
They do sidewalks where they are connected as part of an overall sidewalk system, because it's in the right of way. They will maintain side, some sidewalks, yes, ma'am, but there has to be connectivity for them to, to do that.
So it's not guaranteed, or the developers should not expect that because it's up to B dot to decide.
We can make sure that that's covered under the HOA.
Thank you.
It's landscaping of this trees planting and things like that, does that address somewhere in, in code, in that county ordinance, as far as what kind of trees they can have, do they have to have tree, are the common areas have the? Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm, to, to be clear, I, I'm, I'm used to a much larger where they're looking at the types of trees you can plant.
Yes, sir.
And establishing things like that, that not see here, I just don't know if that's addressed somewhere else that I should be looking for, should I see it here or somewhere?
There, there's a reference to, uh, them meeting, uh, traditional neighborhood design standards with respect to landscaping. We have landscape standards, for example, in South River that related to, that address, uh, the landscape plannings for individual lots, um.
Is that big enough or specific enough to be enforced?
I, I think we can cover that with the SB conditions, yes, sir.
Okay, that's, that's where, again, I put my mind.
What we won't allow, um, and again, it relates to, to the purposes of pocket parks and things like that, is it just to be an unmanaged piece of open space that, that serves no value whatsoever? Pocket parks are designed as gathering spaces for a community, small recreation areas, et cetera, et cetera. It has to meet that standard.
Mr. Black?
Mr. Fencham? I guess I go back to the original application or the original, but we don't have the special exception. So right now, they can, we turn them down, they can go build a hundred and twelve new developments, that's roughly round?
Yes, sir.
And they go and build a hundred and twelve new developments on the same land we're talking about right here, just a lot size, it would be bigger, correct?
Yes, sir.
And in that case, it would have to be, it would not have to be an HOA, correct?
There is some open space that is still shown, that, that, hang on one second.
Cause I guess my, my confusion.
Yeah, there is still some common area that's shown, even under conventional layout, that would require an HOA.
They would have to go to an HOA.
Yes. Uh, there's a stormwater management pond that will be required, or two that will be required as part of this project.
Don't they already combine their round?
Yes, they'll have to build another one, for, for.
For the additional.
For the additional developer.
So are you saying the stormwater management area kicks in the HOA?
Yes, because somebody has to maintain it, and it's not Caroline County.
Also, if they have one in there now, who's maintaining?
Good question, because that was built before we, we had these development standards and before, uh, the state adopted the stormwater management regulation.
I, that's why I don't see anyone.
Right, yeah. So we, I mean, is anyone checking?
I can check, I think DEQ is actively looking at it because we documented all the stormwater facilities in the county. But it's not a maintenance requirement that the county takes.
So my next question, I think I brought this up at the last meeting, is let's say they go ahead and they say, we're going to go ahead anyway, the county said, no. The only entrance that would still exist, they put the twelve, they do not have to put any sort of entrance in. Another ingress egress into the subdivision, correct, if they just stay with the one twelve, is that my understanding?
No, they would actually, you have the current entrance, which is the problem entrance that we're all aware of, the problem works.
Yes.
They still have to construct a new entrance, which is shown on the plan, regardless of whether it's a conventional layout or the hundred eighty-three unit layout. They would not have to construct the left turn lane eastbound on six thirty-nine if they go with the conventional layout. So they still have two entrances. You would have a decel lane, you would not have the left turn lane eastbound, and you would not, potentially not have the closure of the existing Bridlewood to a right in, right out.
Okay. Now, is there a, on that, in that situation, is there a particular number of lots that gets filled that says that kicks it in that they have to do this? Or is it once all hundred and twelve are built?
The, the decel lane?
Well, yeah, the new, the new entrance, so in other words.
Yeah.
So, I mean, is there a certain number of homes? So right now, we reject them, if that's the case, or board says no tonight. If they go and build fifty homes, do they have to build that or is it when they build?
Have to build.
Well.
They have to build dangerous secrets.
When do they, I guess, when do they have to put in that new entrance?
The, the new entrance. Um, in part, that's going to be a VDOT answer because arguably, they could use the existing entrance of Bridlewood. I don't think they would want to because we all know the problems with that intersection. But there's nothing in the current, from, from a county's perspective, there's nothing in the subdivision ordinance that would force them to build that second entrance.
So you just, you just lost me, because you just said they could currently use the, the current.
The one twelve.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I just, the, you said they can, technically, they can use the current entrance, I thought we were talking about they were using a new entrance.
They are, with this special exception.
I'm saying with all this special exception, because you said with all this special exception, I still have to put it in.
They still have to put it in, but there's nothing in our ordinance that dictates when that entrance has to be installed. So it's entirely up to VDOT.
So that's entirely up to VDOT, but if the special exception is passed.
Then this new entrance has to be constructed with the first, first phase.
With the first, with the first phase and how many homes?
Um, it's identified on the, the GDP, but if, under the conditions, that has to be constructed in the interconnection with stirrup lane made within three years.
Okay.
Mr. Black? Yeah, how, how do we know when it's totally up to VDOT, when that happens?
That's without the perception.
Yeah, I'm saying without the perception, how do we know when it happens with VDOT?
They would submit a preliminary plan based on the hundred and twelve lot layout, and VDOT would evaluate it and, and identify when that improvement had to be made.
So we, we never did that, so we don't, we don't know, they, they never did that, nobody did that?
Nobody's done that, no.
One second. One more question, do we want to build, if we approve, do we want that immediately or do we want to do a VDOT?
Yeah.
So I guess the question, Mr. Black, is, is if you're looking at the ingress egress for the, for the new roads, new ingress egress, the special exception clearly makes it mandatory that they do it.
Yeah.
But the one with VDOT, then we have to, we have to see what VDOT says, I have to, what the time takes to live.
And I, I'll be honest to you, like, that's, I've, I've got to be honest, anytime a developer comes to me, I'm, I'm very cautiousness of suspicious, let's put it that way. But since this is directly near my district or which actually I'd like to get it into my district when we do the rezoning, and doing trash picks from, on Ladies Smith Road quite often, like that, the current intersection is extremely dangerous. It's very, very dangerous, and adding another intersection, I think you would find that the, the people within Bridlewood would support having to venture. And, and something that is, is, as soon as possible. I was just doing some basic math, I was talking to Mr. Sealy, even if you, if they get the seventy-five dwellings, which I know some people have, you know, some heartache about, and you have two people going to work, so that's four trips a day, so out and back is four trips. That would be three hundred extra trips on Ladies Smith Road. Now, if you do, we can't really divide by twenty-four hours because people aren't going to work at two AM, well, some are, but most people aren't. If you divide it by just six part hour, hours, instead of twelve, twelve, twelve hours, you get approximately fifty trips an hour, and if you divide that by sixty, it's less than one car per minute. So I, I understand the, the traffic on Ladies Smith Road, I get it because I, I, I live in Lake Landor and I, I pick up trash along the road. I, I walk that road, I understand that. I, I don't think that, personally, I don't think that the three hundred trips, that's assuming that everyone is, there's two people in the house working. I just don't think that's going to have a huge impact and we can get something out of that that guarantees that we're going to have a safer entrance, and I, I think the people currently in Bridlewood would go along with that. I also believe that, the other thing too, is Mr. Shible had said, currently Bridlewood, the customers in Bridlewood right now are under Aqua, Aqua community. So when we have the issues with Aqua, they're kind of under the umbrella with Lake Landor. Mr. Shible has said these people will be on counting water sewers, so we'll get those hookups. So that's a kind of a sub, a sub, kind of bonus for, but to me, the real bonus is the fact that this is going to improve the safety of the road. As long as we have that one hundred percent that's a right in, right out, that there's a new entrance, that's why I believe that we need to do that.
Mr. Fincham, would it, would it be that used for traffic count for houses?
Typically, it's ten vehicle trips a day.
For house?
And vehicles up for that?
Yes.
All right, board members, we have before us, RFB zero three twenty nineteen, I'm sorry. A, a, cross a special exception, zero two twenty twenty-one. We're going to have to just look at it and, and for me, I'm concerned about how close the homes are to each other, it seems. I don't think it's enough space, I was playing golf in a subdivision and I could just barely walk through in between the houses, look for my ball. So I just think, I just think it's too, I think the additional homes are going to cause more consternation for, for those people moving in. I, I agree with Mr. Black, anytime we can alleviate some of the traffic issues for our citizens, particularly when we have an intersection that's fairly dangerous, anything that we can do to alleviate that. But I just think there's more weighing against it than, than power. And those are my comments, so at this point, I'll use the board for a motion on special exception zero two twenty twenty-one, where we can continue discussion. Any more discussion, Ms. Long?
Mr. Fincham, and maybe this has to do with Crystal, it'd be a strong thing. My concern, you're talking about small houses, you know, out of college, I rented a little place and a subdivision, which as other people moved in and then developed, and basically it became a landlord's haven. And now it's, I drove through there about ten years ago and it's horrible. Is there anything in the way to control on a homeowner's association if someone is using their property as rental that they have to be hands-on and they have to maintain? And I know we can't stop people from, from having rentals, there are people that needed rentals, I needed a rental when I got out of college. But how do we control? Is it, I'm, I'm correct to say homeowners?
It's property maintenance.
You, you, you can have property maintenance standards, you can have an HOA that is more restrictive than the local government in terms of regulations within a community. You, you see articles all the time about homeowner's associations enforcing community regulations that some members of the community aren't necessarily happy with that enforcement. Flags is an example, fencing, landscaping, so yes, an HOA can be more restrictive. I will defer to, to the county attorney, but I don't think we can require that language.
But haven't we, you say we could do it, they could have a homeowners association, and that's going to be required. Who's going to read this if this is approved, will that go through planning?
Yes.
Do they write, cut your grass once a month, and that's the homeowners association?
Again, I think the developer in, in preparing the homeowner association documents would, would have to include that language in the documents. Whether we say they cut the grass once a month or twice a month, aside from our property maintenance code, I'm not sure that we can get down to that level of, of language in the.
I'm not, yeah, I understand that, because you will be looking over what is written up. That will be part of the permit aid package.
Yes, we actually will look at the covenants and restrictions when they are submitted to our office prior to the first section of the subdivision being recorded.
Thank you.
I, I agree with everything that Mr. Fincham said, but just to clarify, the HOA in, in preparing their declaration, the creator of a homeowners association, you have to record a declaration of particular coverage. And that declaration can state any number of things, it can prohibit renting entirely, it can control short-term rentals, do any, any number of things over and above what we can do with our zone court. We will see that part planning of you, but it is the HOA's discretion to write that document and determine what goes in it, in what level of restriction, if any, they put on the leasing of the property.
Mr. This is Mr. 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 Underwood?
Yes, sir.
I, I'd just like to address a couple of concerns. As far as the five feet, it's, or I understand some people's consternation, but I just asked Mr. Forehand, if you go into Ladies Smith Village, which I think is outside of Pendleton, it's probably our most popular and fastest-growing subdivision in the county. They might be out of room now, so they're building neighborhood, but if you go into Ladies Smith Village, the, the, it's five feet direct from them. Yeah, it's a very, very small, I mean, Ladies Smith Village, all the houses are on top of each other, and people are buying like crazy. The second thing to address, Ms. Long, as far as, if, if you've gone into Bridlewood, and I go into Bridlewood quite a bit here, you can have a, someone who owns a piece of property that's, that's in bad shape for, so if you go into Bridlewood, but those, the people that are not buying in Bridlewood are, are, it's not a landlord's intention. Those are pretty nice houses going for a pretty fair price point right now. When those houses go up for sale in Carolina, I would argue some of the highest priced homes in Carolina would be right in that area compared to the ladies in the village, so I don't think that, I think price point is going to dictate that the homes are in, in fairly good shape.
Thank you, Mr. Black. All right, yes, Mr. Forehand?
Mr. Fincham, if we had to discuss for the architecture standards, would we address those now? Or it may, it may only be once the applicant.
Yes, I would suggest that we discuss that.
They're just two minor, and they're actually good. Looking at the architecture standards here, number seven, I'm, I'm thinking specifically of corner lots that have road run until two, on two elevation. And it would only require, in that scenario, looking at number seven, it'll only require brick or stone front elevation, even though you have road running to the side elevation. That'd be modified to improve road drainage instead of front. And I don't want to go beyond answering your question. We want to be the developer that follows it on everything committed here, right? We absolutely would do that, it can be amended as a condition, we'd gladly accept that.
Another one, it's consistent with what you have photos. Three of the birchets have shutters, the fourth birch has enhanced trim around the windows. Something detailing that could be added. Again, I've, I've seen the alternative and it's not great, so I'm just looking at, in case you sell this to someone else, could stay with it. And we've seen, we've already seen one of our recently approved developments sold, and then we think maybe getting a lesser product than what we were, were, were sold initially, so that's is a forefront of my thoughts at this point.
If, if we could have it amended and on record that all windows will require either a.
Just the front, just the front, in the front end.
Furnished windows require either a detailed upgraded trim or shutters, we're going to find that.
Again, your photos already show that.
And Mr. Forehand, for the record, corner lots are, are double front end slots, so we would say it's the front end on both, both streets.
Okay. Yeah, I was just looking at the, yeah, the front elevation.
Mr. Thomas?
Um, Mr. Fincham, based on what Mr. Black said about lot size and, and ladies in the village, they, they are, what compared to what's the applicant requesting here, are they larger or smaller?
Uh, there are a number of lots that are actually smaller than what's requested here.
Because I, I have the same concerns as small lot size. I know the answer to the question before I ask it, are there any other subdivisions in the county that have these small lot size?
None built.
None built.
Came out, would potentially allow lots of this size because it is also a TND. So where you see your smaller lot sizes, it's typically in your TNDs where you have higher fenced, you didn't have to be provided. I, I'm sorry.
What I was thinking was the, the, the Brookwood subdivision had small lot size.
They have some small lot sizes, um, they may be, they're probably comparable to this. Um, the, the average lot size in this, even with the, the smaller lot sizes, is still just under ten thousand square feet, which is probably larger than, than what you have. So there's only a, a small percentage of the lots in here that would be the smaller six thousand square foot lots. Okay, thank you.
All right, board members, is there no more questions, or Mr. Sealy?
In our subdivision, we have a, we have an H, we have an HOA ordinance, as the county have, that we modeled all the HOA ordinance.
We don't have an HOA ordinance, no. The HOA regulations are written based upon the, the subdivision or, or site plan. We have certain standards that have to be included in the covenants and restrictions, and they are reviewed by the county attorney to, to make sure legally they are correct for. Uh, and they are reviewed by the county attorney to to make sure legally they are correct form.
So we don't, we don't have any, we don't have any regulation that dictates the number of rentals per subdivision, percentage one.
No, and I'm not sure we could.
Yeah, I mean, I think our zoning ordinance deals with, you know, residential use, single-family use districts. The ownership relationship, whether the best residence would be by the decent owner or somebody there finally, it isn't covered by that. We do have a zoning ordinance, uh, do we have provisions on short-term rentals? We can, we can adopt something to that effect, that that short-term rental.
I can't, I'm losing, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm not close enough. So the-the zoning ordinance, you know, in-in a given zoning district governs, uh, single-family residential use. And and leasing is considered a single-family residential use, just like it is by, you know, you're using it as a home whether you own it and be, you own it outright or you lease it to somebody. That's the use that we're, that we can regulate via zoning. We can get to a little more degree of control with short-term rental. The general assembly gives some guidance on what that is. Um, and we can adopt requirements that are direct batch and search brief. Um, but but generally still, that's, that's not due to the commercial use, that's due to the residential use of anything else. So, um, from a zoning perspective, there's not too much that we can do. Um, the HOA can certainly go further with its restricted covenants. Um, but the HOAs generally to be are regulated by the county, either they're regulated by the CIC board, um, which is the subsidiary D four. So, you know, this is, it's kind of a separate body.
So it would just be like dealing with State Corporations Commission if you had any issues, which would be another night. Thank you again.
Mr. Mr. Benjamin? Yes, sir. It's a good question. Uh, and I don't, I've, if we were to, if we were to defer this tonight, and, um, can you, oh yeah, I want to, I want to work with it. Can applicants get HOA documents to you? Before, is that something that's like when the HOA setup, do they ever get like, here are the covenants, here's, here are the proposed covenants? Is that something that ever occurs or?
Typically, we don't see them until they are ready to.
That's typically, yeah.
Um, get flat approval. Um, certainly, I think we could ask them, you could ask them to to prepare a set draft, uh, covenants and restrictions. You could look at. So yes, I think we could do that. Or the-the alternative is to have more detailed language as to what the covenants and restrictions will include. Uh, that would be, again, uh, ladies in the village example, Carmel Church Station example, um, that curse word example in the northern part of county. Um, where there's some very detailed, uh, language about what the, uh, covenants and restrictions will include.
So if that was up to the applicant, then if we could, if the applicant was okay with that, we could defer, although we saw such time, we saw them, right?
I think you could ask to see them, yes, sir.
Well, it's-it's related, uh, you know.
You gotta get close to the microphone.
I'm, I'm, I'm coming, coming. Um, you can ask, see what they provide, but I did want to clarify that the declaration, which is the document that would contain these restrictions, can be subsequently amended by the HOA. So even if it had a variety of provisions in it now, at some point in the future, the HOA's board could amend their declaration and change what it says. So there's no way that you have, you know, anything that's in that document theoretically can be changed to the future date. So I want you to understand that.
So, well, it does to a certain, my concern here is this, is Bridlewood is going to, Bridlewood subdivision is going to grow whether we do put this. It's gonna grow. It's, it's coming. And this gives us an opportunity for safety. So to me, we're endangering people by letting it grow without the, without the entrance. Because to be honest with you, if B dot, they just, whenever B dot says they want to put in, B dot makes them do the hundred and thirteen, then they might wait till the hundred and thirteen and there's people that are very concerned about their safety in that. And I, we can ask, just like we can ask for the HOA covenants, doesn't mean they have to. So, so I mean, we're, we're, I mean, we talk about safety. Are we willing then to turn around, Sarah, we'll, we'll deny that? Are we willing to do and put money into make that subdivision safer? Are we willing to take the taxpayer money and say, hey, look, we're going to be responsible and we're going to have to make a a separate, because these people are are endangered. I mean, I gave the statistic last time. Literally gave the statistic last time and I'm out there. So we have two ways to go here and and the board has decision. I would like to see, I'd like to make a motion that we defer this until we see some, some, uh, if it's okay with the applicant, some restrictions in the covenants.
All right, there's a motion by, any more discussion? There's a motion by Mr. Black that we defer the special exception. Let me get the number, make sure I got, I have it right. Special exception zero two dash twenty twenty-one, Caroline Development LLC, owner Hidden Valley Estates, that we defer this, um, a ruling on this until at which time we get provisional covenants regarding HOA. Is that right, Mr. Black, is that what you said? That's Mr. Black's motion.
Before you get a second, um, could I ask Mr. Benjamin?
Sure.
Mr. Benjamin, is it appropriate in that same timeframe or would it be appropriate to ask B dot when they would require an entrance if this were not approved?
Yes, I can, I can make that inquiry to B dot.
So then when they came back, we'd have all the information we, we need?
So, so what I would suggest, since Mr. Black, he would amend his motion to include a, uh, analysis from B dot as to when they would recommend a second entrance. So Mr. Black has amended his motion to, um, defer this until at which time we get, uh, the additional information regarding possible covenants for the hidden farm estates. Included in that is an analysis from B dot as anticipated when they will have a second ingress egress required by the applicant. Is there a second? I'll go ahead and second. It's been seconded by Mr. Thomas. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Nay. Uh, roll call please, Mr. Forehand. Mr. Forehand goes aye, Mr. Black. All right, Mr. Black goes aye, Mr. Seeley.
Aye.
Mr. Seeley goes aye, Ms. Long.
Aye.
Ms. Long goes aye, Mr. Thomas.
I put aye as well.
Mr. Thomas goes aye, and I vote nay. Motion carries five to one. Thank you. We will defer this until at which time we get the additional information from the applicant and B dot. Thank you, gentlemen. Next on the agenda, item number nine is the RZ zero three twenty nineteen, the Virginia Bazaar owner.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, your next item, um, discussion, RZ zero three dash twenty nineteen, Virginia Bazaar. Um, the, um, applicant has again, uh, requested the furl of this application for consideration until your December fourteenth meeting. Uh, if you will recall, uh, the application was deferred to tonight. Um, with the understanding that the, um, proposed lot layout and, uh, site plan would be submitted to the, uh, planning commission for review and comment to the board. Um, the applicant, uh, was, um, unable to provide, uh, the site plan, uh, for consideration by the planning commission, um, based upon their ongoing discussion with the user. Um, the, uh, proposed, the developer, uh, from Panatone, uh, Panatoni, uh, is here tonight to, uh, address any questions that the board may have, uh, regarding, uh, their project and, uh, potential, um, user of of that project.
Thank you, Mr. Benjamin. Um, so Mr. Benjamin said the applicant wishes to defer until they get their site plan, I guess, together, back from Mr. Benjamin.
Yeah, they want to defer to the December fourteenth.
December fourteenth meeting. Um, any discussion by the board, Mr. Black?
Uh, uh, does that give the planning commission a time to hear this before the summer fourteen meeting?
Assuming the applicant gets the information to us to get it on the, um, November planning commission meeting, then yes.
So in, in case, if that does not happen, then we would have to.
You would be back here in December fourteenth under the same scenario.
Mr. Seeley?
Mr. Benjamin, how, how long has this been on the board's docket?
Over, um, hang on. January twenty eighth of twenty twenty is when the board held its public hearing, first public hearing on this matter.
So we're closing in on two years.
Yes, sir.
And what's the normal timeframe that we have to act with, act on something?
One year from your date of your public hearing, unless, uh, the applicant requests or consents to a continuation beyond that period of time. So if, once the board had its public hearing in January, the board on its own motion deferred action on this item several times up until, I believe it was your January twelfth meeting of this year. Part of that is COVID related. If you recall, we couldn't conduct non-sigil public business for four to five months, um, in the early part of twenty twenty. But since January twelfth of this year, all of the requests for, uh, deferrals have been, uh, at the request of the applicant, because the board no longer has the authority to defer it on its own motion.
But we did ask, and they, they agreed to take this whole issue back to planning, back in August.
Y-yes. Um.
But they didn't have to do that.
No, we, we meant, we voted, they had to go to.
We, we, we normally, they, they didn't have to do that normally. We, we insisted that they do that.
The board could have voted on it. The board wanted the application to be reviewed by the planning commission because the, uh, amended concept had had not been through the planning commission review. So the board wanted comments from the planning commission on the revised application. So if we get the information in time, yes, we can take it back to the planning commission for review and comment.
I, I just don't know that I agree with another deferral because almost a year then.
The, the, the reason, the reason we got one of the deferral was the board wanted to make sure we had an end user that was satisfactory to the board of this particular facility. Um, then the developer came back with a, the owner came back with a very good end user and and the board had issues and concerns about that end user. So we sent the, we sent the applicant back to find another end user. Um, he found a different, I guess, we're not going to say developer, but a different partner who is identified an end user. We're at the point of voting on that project with the new partner and the end user as soon as he gets the floor planning or the site plan together.
Mr. Hard stop.
Mr. Black?
The only thing that's confused me in this whole thing and what Mr. Thomas has just said is someone applies for a special exception and they have one end user. A rezoning, rezoning. And they have one end user, doesn't look like it's going to go well and then, so they can just find another one. I, I, I thought the application was first for a business, not the land. And I guess I've been kind of confused on that process.
It, you could have a rezoning request for a thirty thousand square foot business. Use that as an example. Your rezoning request is for the use, not necessarily the individual user. So for example, maybe it's a Wendy's, Wendy's initially goes there, but Wendy's could go out of business and another end user or another restaurant could go to that site. Maybe it's Hardest. Or many, so, so, so when you're, you're zoning the use, you're looking at it for use as an office, a restaurant, business, shopping center, whatever that use classification is. The end user, in reality, could change. Once the zoning is in place, the end user can change. You could have.
So with, with that in mind, I guess, maybe, I didn't know this, but, so let's say applicant says business A is going to come in. So you, you vote on the special exception because you know that business A is going to come in. As soon as it's, as soon as it's done, business B comes in, but they're the same, same one. They can just bait and switch and say, we're gonna, we're, we're not going to go with business A anymore, we're going to go with business B. And and they can, so what, what the, what the board of supervisors was told about business A coming in,
and that's exactly why they didn't vote on it the first time.
But it's. And then, and then. I'm, I'm just, I just, yeah, I just, I'm just asking, so like, in other words, they could tell us one hundred percent when we go to board and we think business A is coming in, this is going to be great for the county. We rezoned it to M one, then the developer can say, I have to get that, we, we're going to do, we're going to do business B, we're going to do business B now.
But, but that's why, the point is, that's why with all of those, with all of those bright businesses that can come in, we eliminate a whole bunch or have the, we have the applicant proper to not do certain things, so then we know it's going to be A, B, or C of all the list of things it can be.
Wh-when you were looking at the previous application for this, not the original one, but the, the one that was submitted in June, I believe, for Flint Development, you were looking at a one million square foot warehouse distribution facility. Okay? They were talking about users, but you were looking at a one million square foot warehouse distribution facility. That's what you would be approving.
Cause that's covered under M one, right?
Correct.
So let's just say that this, could they put in something that's completely, I guess my question is, let's just say that it was Flint and then could Flint turn around and do something completely different that's M, that's M one? So it's not a warehouse at all?
No, no, we, we had actually eliminated it.
Right.
A lot of the proffers and tied it specifically to warehouse, office, and distribution with that application.
So could it be a different end user that's even bigger?
No, it was specifically using that example in one million square foot warehouse distribution. It could not hit the bars without coming back to the board for a proof.
Yeah, but it, but on that same thing, if we, if we make it M one, we could do a stone crushing operation that qualifies as one of the authorized uses under M one. That's the bait and switch that we prevent by saying, you're going to say you're not doing this, you're not doing that, you're not doing that. Anatoni, I don't know the gentleman from Anatoni that's out there, I don't think I've ever spoken to him before, but I know they, they create actual building. So I don't think he's going to, he's going to do a stone crushing facility or a tire remanufacturing facility in that site, because they do build. So.
So when you have a zoning application to make sure that. So, when you have a zoning application to make sure that it's not done there, then we want to follow the same path that we did with Flint.
Exactly.
And eliminate certain uses that the board deems objectionable for the site. And if the last remaining one, two, or five uses are appropriate for that site in the board's opinion, then that's the zoning that gets approved.
Right. They're going to build a building because that's what they do. They may come in and say, we're going to build a office building. And the biggest software development company in the world says, we're going to move in there. And we all know that's not going to happen, so their office building could then be somebody else. Their office building could be something different. But if that's what they say they're going to build in their building or when they build their building, that's what we'll be voting on and nothing else. Nothing else, right? Mr. Sealy.
Can we, can we limit the number of vehicle trips a day to the building?
I think they could proffer a limitation on the number of vehicle trips a day. We actually did that with the Collins rezoning where they barely, where they proffered a limit of five thousand vehicle trips a day.
And who has to monitor that for the violation?
The county in conjunction with VDOT. So, planning, zoning, and VDOT would have to monitor. But there is a way to address potential vehicle trips, traffic counts. I wouldn't necessarily say that's the best model, but that is a good model that addressed, I think, some concerns of the board.
So, what's a better model?
You potentially narrow it down and have not only a total trip count, but a AM or PMP trip limitation? Because that with monitoring requirements.
Gentlemen, I hate to break up the party, but they've asked for a deferral, we're going all the way around Robin Hood's bar. Want to kind of bring us back. What was the danger question is, in fact, the applicant has requested for this to be deferred till December fourteenth at a December fourteenth meeting. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. There's a motion by Mr. Thomas that we defer second to Mrs. Long. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed?
Nay.
We have one nay division in the House. Mr. Forham, how do you vote? Mr. Forham, both aye. Mr. Black? Mr. Black, both aye. Mr. Sealy?
Nay.
Mr. Sealy votes nay. Mrs. Long?
Aye.
Mrs. Long, both aye. Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas, both aye. And I vote aye as well. Motion carried five to one. Thank you, Mr. Fincham. New business, under new business, the first reading proposed amendment to chapter one oh three, article twelve, license taxes of the Code of Carolina County.
I'm back, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Good sir. Mr. Wassoon has been quite busy lately. He's now looking at reviewing the county's heart beach hole ordinance and are recommending some proposed changes for its consideration. Summarizing them, the first change simply cleans up references throughout the ordinance to a twenty-five-hundred-dollar gross receipts threshold that requires a business license. As the board is aware, the threshold is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's been so for quite a while. And so, there are these references in there to twenty-five-hundred that the best we can figure would just miss when the ordinance was updated several years ago. Clearly not the board's intent, it's not been administered that way in the commissioner's office that they need to come out. The second change is to increase the business license rate for the contractor category from twelve cents for a one hundred dollars of gross receipts to thirteen cents. And to also increase the service category rate from nineteen cents to twenty-two cents. These are rates that have been in place for well over twenty years. Commissioner's office believes that it's appropriate to raise them at this time. And these proposed rate increases would generate possibly forty-one thousand dollars additional about the county. Finally, the amendments would remove the requirement that tenor merchants, peddlers, and event promoters obtain a business license. And this change is intended primarily to do away with requiring small vendors to pay the thirty dollars, like, for example, vendors at a church, bazaar, small festival, that sort of thing, to pay the thirty dollars to get a business license. I think several of us have heard over the years complaints about that, that it's really not worth their while to have to pay that and they wouldn't make enough profit to even return again the following year. That change would result in estimated revenue loss of about sixteen thousand dollars for the county. But I believe that the commissioner's office believes that that is not Sam time well spent. There's not a return on investment that time could be better spent on more productive revenue sources for the county. So, those are the proposed changes, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is the first reading and Sam's looking for guidance as to whether to manage the public hearing with the changes.
Thank you, Mr. Parton. All right, board members, you can see the changes. The threshold is twenty-five-hundred rather than the one hundred thousand, one hundred and fifty thousand for business license. The change from twelve cent to thirteen cent. Make sure I got it. The change from twelve cent to thirteen cent per one hundred for business license. And from nineteen cent to twenty-two cent for the personal business. Those are the changes that are being asked to be made tonight. And if something we would recommend, just go to public hearing. So, board members, questions for Mr. Parton, Mr. Black?
Yeah, I just got Mr. Wassoon or someone from the show. David Watson, the commissioner's office, show up. I just got a, I actually had a call about six months ago in regards to this from a contractor. And I, maybe this is more of a board thing, but the hundred and fifty thousand, I mean, how long has it been paying up a hundred and fifty thousand? Because if you make one forty-nine in gross receipt, nothing picks incorrect from a contractor, is that my understanding?
With contractors, it would depend on whether you're located, the business is located in Carolina or.
Yes, I said they're located in Carolina.
It would be a hundred and fifty thousand.
So, if I make a hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars, I don't pay anything. But then I go up to a hundred and fifty-one thousand, I'm getting slammed with the tax.
It would be adding fifteen twelve cents for a hundred and fifty dollars.
Right, and so. Well, I thank you, Mr. Parton, I understand that. So, I mean, we go from one fifty, then the next jump is three hundred. I don't know, it was a contractor and the contractor, this is gross, not net, correct? So, this is gross, I mean, that's not even, I mean, they're spending a lot of money now with the materials and everything, I just think that one fifty is, I got to be honest with you, I think that one fifty is too low. I mean, I think we need to go higher on that, on that number. Yeah, I mean, contractors, the materials and so forth, you're talking about gross.
It's gross.
You spend fifty thousand, a hundred, yeah, then you're actually going to get taxed. That's the hard time I'm having with this because with inflation going up there, they just, it's a gross receipt. I mean, your contract's for a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars and you say you spend a hundred thousand dollars to get a house. You're getting taxed on a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, not the fifty-one that you actually net, right? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I think it's more difficult tax wise, but it's going to be on their tax return what the net is, but, so it grows.
Yeah, I mean, to me, the growth would be probably an easier measure. It's a simpler number, yes. But it's the one that might, somehow, that's why it's gross.
Why didn't you recommend the twenty-five-hundred? What was I writing down?
The best we can tell, Mr. Underwood, is long ago, the threshold was apparently twenty-five-hundred dollars. Just left it in, not changed, amended to the one, to match the one-fifth because it's completely out of place.
Normally, I don't ask what our neighbors do, but what are our surrounding counties, how are they calculating for business taxes?
That's something that can range strangely. County like Pennsylvania, two million dollars.
But I mean, is it on net? Is it just an arbitrary number? Is it?
Specific. It's all, things are on gross and like I said, risk and correct me if I'm wrong, but locality do have the option to accept net profit, but I think it's only, if I remember correctly, it's only to exempt them from a business license tax if they did not make any profit. But you cannot, if I'm not mistaken, you cannot tax business license other than for your services.
Okay.
This is a beach hole tax, correct? I mean, this is the one tax, Mr. Thomas, you and I were on the board when we raised this to one fifty. We went to fifty and then a hundred and then one fifty. And this is the one tax that I think the general assembly is looking to take away from this. It's been several times, this last session, I was surprised we didn't lose it because they looked real hard at it. I don't know what this brings us revenue wise, I don't, because it's a business and professional occupancy tax.
It's, your annual totals tend to be about eight hundred and fifty thousand.
A year for beach hole for us. I mean. Well, if we raise the number, and they probably could go look, but if we raise the number from one fifty to two hundred because we raised it in fifty thousand increments as we did this, because we started, yeah, it was a long time ago.
Were you on the board?
I was on.
No, Black? Yeah, but at least ten years ago.
Eleven?
Eleven? What a memory. Oh, we're in ten years ago.
But I mean, in keeping up with Mr. Black and with Mr. Forham are saying is the cost of materials rolls into your overall gross receipts because it's what you spend. And now we're going to actually tax somebody on what they, if they buy lumber for a hundred thousand and pay tax on it, they're going to pay tax again to us because if they cross the hundred and fifty threshold, they'll get taxed twice.
Well, let's make it two hundred and move it to public hearing. Two fifty, sold.
Well, I mean, David, do you have any idea where the threshold line for us is in this?
As in comparatively to other counties?
No, I mean, if we, how many are at one, at two hundred, how many are at two fifty? I mean, do we know what that means? It's something that we're going to have to wrestle with sooner or later anyways. So, the goal was to wean ourselves.
This is the first reading, so, all right, if you're asking how many, like, what percentage of businesses are under and over that threshold? Roughly eleven to twelve percent are the ones that are over. So, roughly eighty-eight to eighty-nine percent do not pay any license tax.
Oh.
In Carolina.
Make a difference.
Fourteen.
But if we go to two fifty, do we know what impact that would have? Can we defer and do another reading?
First reading, so we could always, we could always send it back and get some more numbers in.
Well, I mean, yeah, we've been looking at a rate for numbers.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to look at where inflation's going and what the cost of materials, because I hate to see somebody paying tax on tax.
We would just have to think what's front of you is actually what you're talking about. What's front of you is just to remove what we thought. This is not immediate.
I know that's not what's in front of us, but this sort of impacts, the one impacts the other. While we were here, it came to mind, we, because we, as Mr. Thomas said, we started, we did this eleven years ago, but I think we did it twice in successive years. We went from fifty to a hundred, a hundred to one fifty because of what was going on then. So, if we could look at two hundred to two fifty and see what that threshold is for us.
We could probably run some numbers on the current, what, about fourteen hundred, fifteen hundred businesses that would create that percentage. Again, right now, it's about ten, twelve percent off the threshold. So, we can run numbers based on two hundred, two fifty, you know, on what we have to see where we're at.
Mr. Wassoon, I'm just confirming, Mr. Sealy, don't forget to make sense.
But you, and then we would show the revenue law.
But you can't, in this type of tax, you can't prorate it, can you? All right.
Mrs. Long?
Could you also give us information on what other counties, surrounding communities are doing? Thank you.
All right, so I would, the board, we should proceed.
So, that doesn't affect the, this is just the rate by which that gets applied to that amount, correct?
Yes.
This is the rate for the amount that we're currently at.
Go to public hearing.
I don't see any reason why not. We're just adjusting the rate, we're actually fixing some things that are holdovers that should have been fixed before as I read it.
So, is there a motion to go to public hearing for the proposed amendment changes to chapter one oh three, article twelve, license taxes for the Code of Carolina County, some of?
Going forward with leaving the threshold at one fifty thousand in place for public hearing or would you, I would like to probably move?
What's that, Mr.?
In response to Mr. Parton, I would like to attach that to this, to these, so even if it means delay it a month.
So, attach the two fifty to? This is, okay.
You want to change your motion after a second reading? So that we can make all the changes upon?
So, yeah, so the amended.
And we can look at two hundred?
Two hundred and two fifty, is that possible?
If we push it out, it would probably not be in time to make it.
For January? So, again, I guess the real question is, the impact that it would have is the question. If we don't think it would have significant impact, but I don't think if we have that answer, I got a feeling that it won't have significant impact. It's going to some, but I don't think it would be.
What that number would be, I don't know.
Right, I don't want to be, that's the part we don't know.
Mr. Parton, can we go to public hearing, we advertise, can we go to public hearing with up to two fifty? And then if we so choose coming down with a max of two fifty as a threshold? Because I think we can always go left, but we can't go more, correct? I think if we started to advertise two fifty, we can come to two hundred.
Oh, you mean, so advertise, you don't have that revision, you're not, but we don't have that revision in this one.
We don't have that revision in this one, that, that, that section is not a new change, but you're saying make this change. To increase the threshold, and then you wanna know, if, if you get the number wrong, you decide you wanna change it. Can you change it after the public hearing?
Correct, can we bring it down before the public hearing, instead of being two fifty, be two hundred?
Because it, it.
It would be a lesser amount.
That would be, but it would be, but it would be more, more people would be. Yes. Yeah, because see, you're thinking that you're coming down, but you're increasing the tax per. You go from one fifty, that's the threshold that you have to start paying, if you say you're gonna advertise a threshold of two fifty, that means all the people from one fifty to two fifty don't.
Don't pay.
Which means they're gonna be great, not paying anymore, and then you lower it back down, you would be going the wrong way. It would becoming more restricted, not less, you can. You can advertise eighty cent tax rate and go down, because people are paying less. This is the exact opposite, and this is a threshold, we go to two hundred. Yeah, you could go the other way, and less people would be paying tax.
So you're saying advertise two hundred, but we can raise it to two fifty?
Yeah, the lowest that you would accept is, if you go to two hundred, you can't go below that.
Okay.
Clearly, you want everyone who's potentially impacted by change to be incorporated in the notice, so if you notice the change of two hundred. Then everybody two hundred and above is gonna, that has an interest, is gonna show up and express their comments, and if you say, well, we're actually moving up to two fifty. The two fifty and the above still have noticed a potential change.
Okay, so I have a plan.
We said, well, we, we saw the impact of two hundred.
We don't, we don't know what.
One seventy-five, you start.
Once we know one seventy-five, we can go one seventy-five, and we can say, okay, we'll make it even to hundred, again. We, we just, we just.
Three numbers, yeah, yes.
One seventy-five, we're going.
Yeah, we left it, it could go up, and that would encompass everybody. If you, if you did that.
If you did that, you would have to make some kind of notice that you, you were potentially changing it, because what you don't want is to have. Nobody know that you might be.
Right. Right.
Yeah, but they were saying we won't make the January meeting, it's no problem.
Well, we, we, we don't have a meeting at the end of this month, we have that solo meeting, so we ought to be able to get the information in a month. Notice it.
So we, we typically.
Oh, the mail, oh, the mail is a problem.
Yeah, we, we typically try to handle how to get this separate.
So do we want to advertise one seventy-five?
Yes, I'm second that motion.
Well, just maybe, he just needs to amend his motion.
Amended to one seventy-five, alright.
Now, I commend my second.
Alright, third, call for vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You got that, Mr. Parton, one seventy?
One seventy-five, and the changes that were, all the other changes that were proposed, it all.
Right, increases thirteen, then increase to twenty-two.
David, could you look at two hundred and two fifty just for?
Yeah, if you need any. Just get lots of numbers.
Well, I think those are the numbers, if you'd like it, one seventy-five, two hundred, two fifty.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Oh, we're gonna do, we're already done.
We have to.
Anything else that you're calling?
Right, just call it.
Um, on the informational calendar, um, hardly mentioned, um, Microsoft, Bow and Green Harvest Fest is Saturday. And then it was just mentioned again, at six o'clock on the twenty-sixth, we have our, uh, solar work session, most of which will be closed session. Well, with Chris, and that's at six PM, and we do need to reset that this meeting to that meeting. The thirtieth, the last Saturday of the month, is Frog Level Festival. Um, obviously, erection day is Tuesday the second, which is now, uh, due to the general assembly, a, a holiday for county offices are closed. Uh, our next board meeting, and this is a change we've made, uh, recently, is the ninth. Um, Bethany's Day is the eleventh, another holiday, uh, and then, uh, the Baikman Conference starts on the thirteenth, runs through the sixteenth. And obviously Thanksgiving is only pointing fifth. With that, Dr. Calverick, who's not, uh, with us right at the moment, did ask. Um, if we were gonna meet on, um, November sixteenth, and that was original request from them. And I went back, and Pam was gracious to send me this letter that we wrote to them. Um, at the November twelfth board meeting of two thousand and twenty, y'all agreed to the, uh, these dates with the schools, with. January twenty-sixth, February twenty-third, March ninth, July thirteenth, and October twelve. We ultimately didn't have a meeting on July thirteenth, if you remember back, we, we had a conflict. And we just finished our October twelfth meeting with the schools, she asked, are we having a November meeting on the sixteenth, which I don't know, I don't have that. So, anyway, I told her, I would ask you, do you want to meet with the schools on the ninth?
That's the conference, Mr. Cullen.
The ninth.
The, the, the sixteenth is the.
I know, but, yeah, but not, she had that, cause that would have been our normal day we would have met, um, but they took it around. I'm asking now, do you wanna meet with the school, schools on the ninth, say, or thirty? We were not, they had put it on their calendar, you never agreed to that. And I just told her I would bring it forward.
We will not meet on the sixteenth?
Nine.
On the ninth, oh, on the, we will not meet on the ninth.
We'll pass that along, her and her. Present, I did make that request. So right now, we don't have any scheduled meetings. Right now, with, this is, any joint works, I should, schools, the, the farthest that we had decided was the twelfth, which we did today. So there are no meetings scheduled currently, joint meetings with the schools.
Do we, do we?
The thirtieth, the thirtieth of November is audited by the state. So I'd imagine late November by the town, how auditor finishes all the work.
Yeah, I don't think we need to. Until we have numbers, I think. We can't tell them anything about what we. What we have, and they can't tell us anything.
Anyway, I was, was asking on the behalf, she had sent me a request. Talked to her before she had to leave and told her I would pass it, just to make sure, because. We're running out of time, if you're gonna have that meeting, so. That's pretty much my report, don't forget, we need to recess until the six o'clock on the twenty-sixth of October, our solar work session with, uh, uh, council.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion for October twenty-sixth, six PM, for special meeting on solar.
Motion that we lead on the twenty-sixth, solar. Work session, yeah.
Give me it to close second.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Me opposed? As carried, we'll make, uh, slower, in our post-session, session. On the twenty-sixth of October. Any closing more comments, Mr. Foran? Motion.
I have done, Mr. Chairman.
This, long. We're now in recess, take.
I'm going through the first ever Sunday voting at the registrar's office.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas, I did, that was, it was a good thing. Alright, we are recessed till twenty-sixth, thank you.